Meeting of the Marietta Planning Commission is called to order. Would the Secretary please call roll for determination of a quorum, please?
Chair Fisher?
Here.
Vice Chair Harland?
Here.
Commissioner Vrooman?
Here.
Commissioner Wajek?
Here.
Commissioner Lapaglia?
Here.
Let the record reflect, all members are present.
Thank you, Madam- At this time, we'd like to have the Pledge of Allegiance. Like you to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, led by our Commissioner, Harland.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now be moving on to the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Seeing none.
Okay, I'm calling for a motion and a second to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Harland approves.
I'll second his motion.
All right, Mr. Commissioner Vrooman, seconds it. We'll take a roll call vote, please, Madam Secretary.
Chair Fisher?
Approve.
Vice Chair Harland?
Aye.
Commissioner Vrooman?
Aye.
Commissioner Wajek?
Aye.
Commissioner Lapaglia?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We have an item on the consent calendar. And before we go forward, are there any public comments on the consent calendar?
Thank you, Chair, there are no public comments.
All right. It's a new proposed addition to the capital improvement plan fiscal years 2023, '24 through 2027, '28, in conformance with the city Marietta general plan. Can I call for a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move approval.
Okay, approval by Mr. Commissioner Wojcik?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Harland. Please, Madam Secretary, can we do a roll call vote?
Chair Fisher?
Yes.
Vice Chair Harland?
Aye.
Commissioner Vrooman?
Aye.
Commissioner Wajek?
Aye.
Commissioner Lapaglia?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We are now moving on to the public comments. At this time, we will take public comments. Any person may address the Planning Commission on any subject pertaining to city business which does not relate to any item listed on the agenda or the consent calendar. Normally, no action may be considered or taken by the Planning Commission on any matter not listed on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes for each discussion topic. Madam Secretary, do we have any non-agenda public comments?
Thank you, Chair, we do not have non-agenda public comments.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We are now moving on to the approval of the minutes portions of the agenda. We're approving the minutes of March 22, 2023, regular Planning Commission meeting as presented. Madam Secretary, are there any members of the public requesting to speak on the approval of the minutes?
Seeing none.
I'm now calling for a motion and a second to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Commissioner Vrooman makes the motion?
I'll second.
Commissioner Harland seconds it. We have a motion and a second, Madam Secretary, please do a roll call vote.
Chair Fisher?
Yes.
Vice Chair Harland?
Aye.
Commissioner Vrooman?
Aye.
Commissioner Wajek?
Aye.
Commissioner Lapaglia?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, let's move on to the public hearing. Public hearing is- What's- the staff is going to present the Ivy House Revised Permit 2021 through 2429, Tentative Track Map 2021, 2428, Master Development Plan 2021 to 2430. Staff, are you ready to make the presentation?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Chairman Fisher, for the introduction. Good evening. Chairman Fisher, again, Vice Chair Harland, and distinguished members of the Planning Commission. So today, we will explore a property site outlined in red in the downtown Marietta-specific plan. The property comprises of five parcels, and the proposal this evening is for revision to a previously approved project. The applicant is requesting to revise the master development plan, the tentative track map, and the site development plan. I'll be discussing these changes throughout the presentation. So the project site is identified in the city's general plan land use element as single-family residential with a range in density from 1.1 to 10 dwelling units per acre, subject to the zoning for the property. So the project site zoning is residential, single-family one, with a target density range of up to five dwelling units per acre.
Can I do just one second? I forgot to ask if anybody on the Planning Commission wishes to abstain or recuse themselves from this item. Seeing none, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Thank you.
Thank you. So the project density at the site is three and a half dwelling units per acre. Residential housing is permitted within the single-family one zone, and the proposed residential use and density are consistent with the single-family general plan designation. So we'll spend a little bit of time on this particular slide. So let's discuss the vision of the downtown Marietta-specific plan and three guiding principles that support that vision. The idea of a downtown evokes an image of a destination where people have opportunities to live, work, and shop in an environment that creates a feeling of cohesiveness and compactness. A place that encourages pedestrians to stroll its street-lined streets, shop in its stores, and stop for a bite to eat. This is the vision of the downtown Marietta. A series of neighborhoods work together to establish the area as a vibrant destination. The project before you this evening implements the vision by providing the opportunity for new housing and future families living in this new neighborhood designed to be cohesive and appropriately compact with tree-lined streets and less than three blocks away from the business corridor along Washington Avenue. So I've highlighted the project site down here. And here we can see its proximity to a future public park, and then the Washington Business Corridor, and then beyond is Civic Center and school. A lot of activity. So the first guiding principle of historic character and pedestrian activity calls for the area to be maintained as a unique community asset. Public streets and private development will create a walkable, pedestrian-oriented environment. Washington Avenue will serve as the city's main street and provide a unique pedestrian experience for residents and visitors alike. So the project meets this guiding principle of the vision through the project design, with the creation of the single-family lots and the design and incorporation of tree-lined public street improvement sidewalks with benches and a walking trail that are consistent with the downtown-specific plan detail. The second guiding principle of sustainable development and open space calls for development to include green building practices such as solar, drought-tolerant landscaping, and best practices for stormwater management. The plan will also limit the impact to sensitive habitat that surrounds Marietta Creek. Setbacks from the creek will ensure minimal disturbance to the area while providing public open space amenities. So the project meets this guiding principle of the vision by preserving open space and creating a public walking trail along the creek, which we will see as we move along in the presentation. The project has been reviewed to avoid disturbance of Marietta Creek and has clearly defined the setbacks from the creek to the project site to ensure minimal disturbance. Drought-tolerant landscaping, solar power in the new homes, and the best practices for stormwater management have been implemented for the entire site, or they've been designed for the entire site. And lastly, the third guiding principle of attractive residential neighborhoods with diverse housing options calls for the downtown to include attractive residential neighborhoods that will contribute to the increased activity and economic vibrancy of the area. Diverse housing options ranging from single-family to multifamily to mixed-use units will be encouraged that support opportunities for people to live and work close by or within the same neighborhood. The project, again, meets this guiding principle of the vision by proposing single-family homes in a compact setting with varied architectural styles that comply with the downtown-specific plan. These homes will create an attractive residential neighborhood, offering opportunities for diverse housing options that don't currently exist in the media area while contributing to increased activity and economic vibrancy of the downtown area. So now that we've discussed the downtown-specific plan and the project's applicability to the plan, let's turn to the project proposal. So as Chairman Fisher introduced the public hearing item tonight, we have three applications: a master development plan, tentative map, and a revised development plan. So the revised development plan sets land use standards separate from those identified in the specific plan for implementing the construction of the homes within the project site. The project site was redesigned, and as a result, the setbacks of the master development plan were revised to reflect the new proposal. These new setbacks were used to redesign the lots and the plotting of the homes. So the site is 22 acres and is comprised of five parcels. The tentative track map proposes subdividing the property into 62 parcels and seven-lettered lots. The 62 parcels are for single-family homes, and the seven-lettered lots consist of drainage basins, alleyways, and open space dedication, which is the Marietta Creek, which is identified on the map above. So the homes are designed to incorporate the look of traditional design elements described in the downtown-specific plan. The homes are a mix of single-story and two-story. There is a variety of architecture throughout the neighborhood with three different home styles, each with three varied elevations. So I show three different home styles there just to give us an idea of the variety. So there's, like I said, there's single-family homes, and there's two types of two-story homes. And so within each type, there are three different elevations, which adds variety to the neighborhood. So you've seen the layout of the tentative map, and here is a plan showing how the lots will be developed with single-family homes, the location of the water quality detention basins, the alleyway access from the public street to the residential lots, the proposed public trail along Marietta Creek, and the tree-lined street improvements for New Clay, B Street, and the internal circulation streets. So one public letter was received, today in fact. Staff has reviewed the comment letter and addressed these concerns in the staff report and the presentation this evening. I'm going to read the letter into the record before we move on to the recommendation. So the letter is from Samantha Hallen, 24711 Clay Avenue, Marietta, California, 92562. Dear members of the City Planning Commission, I am writing to express my deep concern regarding the proposed development of a 62-home residential housing tract in Old Town Marietta. As a homeowner in this beautiful community, I strongly urge the City Planning Commission to reconsider this development and preserve the historical significance, natural beauty, and unique charm of Old Town Marietta. Old Town Marietta holds a special place in the hearts of its residents. Its rich history has shaped the character and identity of our community. Preserving the area's historical heritage is crucial to maintaining a strong sense of identity and pride among its residents. By allowing the construction of a housing tract in this area, we risk diluting the historical fabric of Old Town Marietta and losing a vital piece of our collective memory. Furthermore, one of the key attractions of Old Town Marietta lies in the balance between urban development and the natural environment. The open spaces and green areas are not just aesthetically pleasing, but also vital for the well-being of our community. They provide a sanctuary for local wildlife, promote biodiversity, and offer walking trails which are used regularly. Additionally, the character and the charm of Old Town lies in its unique architecture, small-town atmosphere, and close-knit community. The proposed housing tract threatens to disrupt this by introducing a large-scale development that may not harmonize with the existing aesthetic and ambiance. It is essential to safeguard the architectural integrity and cultural significance of the area, fostering an authentic atmosphere that attracts visitors and supports local businesses. I implore the City Planning Commission to consider the alternative solution that aligns with the values of our community without sacrificing its historical importance or natural beauty. In conclusion, I respectfully request the City Planning Commission to carefully deliberate on the potential consequences of approving the development of a 62-home residential housing tract in Old Town Marietta. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I trust that you will give due consideration to the concerns expressed by myself, being Samantha, and countless others who share a deep passion for the preservation of our community. Please keep us informed of any updates or opportunities for the public input on this crucial issue. Thank you for your time and consideration, Samantha Hallen. So in conclusion, it is staff's recommendation this evening. And it's a wordy recommendation, so-
Before you give the recommendation, may I ask something? Originally, in 2008, the City Council approved a residential development for this site. And that is valid through January of 2026. Can you elaborate a little on that before we go into the recommendation, if that's possible?
Absolutely. So the dates and the timing that you've identified is correct. The application has- the applicant has submitted an application for an extension of time that we are processing currently and expect it to be granted for the additional time extension. And the project is compliant with timelines of being valid.
Thank you, sorry to interrupt.
So it's staff's recommendation this evening to the Planning Commission to recommend to the City Council to adopt the addendum to the mitigated negative declaration pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines, Section 15164, and adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Marietta recommending City Council approval of a master development plan, 2021, 2430, tentative track map, 2021, 2428, and revised development plan permit, 2021, 2429, for Ivy House. A 22-acre site to be developed as a 62-single-family detached lots with related improvements for circulation, infrastructure, and Marietta Creek drainage channel located east of Marietta Creek, west of New Clay Avenue, and south of B Street within the residential single-family one zone of the downtown Marietta-specific plan area.
Thank you, Erin, for your presentation. At this point in time, we're going to take questions from the commission members to the staff, and I'll start off with Mr. Wojcik. Commissioner Wojcik?
Thank you, and thank you for that presentation, Erin. So again, we're only here tonight to consider any changes to the project, not the project itself, correct?
That is correct.
And in my read of the changes, I know the square footage of the homes were changing. In fact, I think the bigger home was going to be- is now larger in square footage, and the smaller home, they have shrunk a little bit, the square footage.
They did change up the makeup of each lot and the plotting that they had for square footage, yes.
And then today, it looks like they're proposing 62 homes. Has that number changed from the 2008 approval?
The 2008 approval granted 60 homes, and this proposal is for 62, so they would have two additional lots.
And then looking at the actual map in front of us, the diagram, the- I don't know what direction this is running, but the- I guess it's the alleyway at the bottom, running from the left to the right of the map? Yeah. So why cannot- why can that not be a street? And it must be an alleyway. I was always told bad things happen in alleyways. But that's not necessarily true, it's streets. So why is that an alleyway and not a street?
So I think what- So the alleyway functions as a street in terms of its providing vehicle access from the public street to the residential home. But why an alley? Because the site design of the project before you today is a style of development that allows for alleyway access in a traditional setting, if you will. So they're trying to bring back the feel of something you might see that was developed a long time that had alleyway access to it. And so this is an updated style of of a previous layout design of the past.
So in the 2008 approval, was that an alleyway then? Or was it more of a street, or was there nothing there at all?
Commissioner, just to clarify, as Erin talks about how the applicant's designing this, the ADUs that are part of these are front-loading on the alleyway. So it's that kind of kitschy, old-school suburban type of style where you have a front, and then they get the trash pickup in the back. So, you know, the width is important, but based upon how the design is, you know, this will accommodate trash cans, parking, and pedestrian-friendly facilities. We feel that that's an appropriate design because it will allow them to achieve the density they need and access to each of the units. So in the front, they'll have access on the larger street for the single family, and on the rear, you have the alleyway.
Which kind of is going to lead me to my point. So the- they're proposing that they could build ADUs on these lots, 750 square feet. And I'm- it's unclear, I guess, is that an option for the homeowner? Or are they putting in an ADU in every single lot? Do we know?
Well, this evening, we're talking about 62 single-family homes. The ADUs are not a part of the project.
Okay.
This evening.
But it was in the report, so that's why I thought it was part of the project.
I think we talked about the ultimate design, and I think that's how we're clarifying it right now.
So my- okay, so my question is hypothetically, let's say every single lot has an ADU. And so we can take that a step further and say, okay, for every ADU, there's going to be at least one vehicle, possibly two, depending on who's living in these ADUs. And so I guess these residents of the ADUs will be using the alleyway to park along? Is that the concept here?
So it will be for both. You- the primary residence, so that there are three lot designs. One of the lot designs has access from the public street and also from the alleyway access. Two of the other plotting designs have the access solely from the alley, so it's a mix. So it won't just be ADUs that are accessing their unit from the alleyway. It will be a resident of a main home using the alleyway to access their home.
Okay, but if I understand, all their garages are on the street side, not the alleyway side?
There are some homes that have garages in the front.
Okay, so some garages will be accessed from the alleyways. Other homes, the garages will be accessed from the street?
Correct.
Okay.
It's a mix.
A mix. And how wide is the alleyway street compared to the other streets laid out?
I'd need a second to check the detail, but in general, the public street is wider than the alley. The alley, I believe, is 28 feet wide, and let me check.
Okay, no problem.
We believe that's about 28, but we'll verify it because FIRE did review that for access requirements, but Erin will conform shortly.
Any idea off the top of your head what the reg- the other streets, what they're with, would be?
Yes, okay, so the alleyway is 28 feet, and the internal circulation streets, the internal ones, those are 60 feet wide.
All right. So I'm just a little concerned, and maybe this has been addressed by staff. If we have these ADUs, and whether you're a homeowner parking on the street, or you live in an ADU and you're parking along the street, or I should say the alleyway, it's not that wide. And so if you have cars parked on both sides of this alleyway, unless if it's a one-way thing, how is traffic going to go back and forth in these alleyways?
Thank you for the question. So the alleyways are for access to the homes exclusively. The parking will not be allowed in the alleyway. At all, ever, at any time. It'll have the red curbing because it is a fire lane. The fire department needs a minimum of 28 feet when they go to a house for, you know, fire needs.
Okay. Other than the square footage, I think that's the primary thing I picked up from the changes from 2008. Any other primary- and the number of homes, obviously, changed by two.
I would say, and this goes along with the square footage, the lot coverage changed a little bit.
Yeah.
But that ties into the square footage.
Right.
Yeah.
And any other changes? I didn't see any, but I want to make sure I didn't miss something.
No, it was the addition of the lots, the reorientating of the plotting. And then, like I said, the setbacks were different from the previous proposal. They designed the site with the setbacks that are in the new master development plan.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Erin.
Thank you, Commissioner Wojcik. Commissioner Lapaglia?
All right, thank you. Thanks for the presentation, Mr. Renamaki. I- let's see, Commissioner Wojcik checked off a few of mine. The open space down in the detention basin, somewhere in there, I think it said it had a dedicated eight acres of open space. But then in your previous slide, you had a park over next to the old mill. Does that have anything to do with this project? It looked like it was highlighted.
I think it's proximity to the project is the association, but they're completely separate. I was just trying to highlight the future plans of Pioneer Park, the proximity of the project, and how it flows up to Washington Avenue.
Okay, great. Back to the- Back to the south detention basin, is this going to be like a, like a gated detention basin, or will this be like a grass field that's like accessible as, you know, a makeshift park, or?
So, the detention basin will have fencing around it, so, so it won't have access to it, because it'll be, have a slope down for safety, et cetera.
You see, you see some detention basins that are, that are like kind of double as like a grass field around town, so I was curious if, if that was a part of the design. So, the walking trails, can you highlight some of the walking trails that you were talking about earlier?
Yes, this is an exciting amenity of the project, because this will be the first trail that we have proposed along Marietta Creek right here. And so, the trail will start here on B Street for anyone walking down B Street, and they can enter the site trail right here, and walk along this tree-lined trail against the creek. There's a little alternative route, and then they'll hit the alleyway, which also has a walking path on each side, and they'll walk over to New Clay, or come from New Clay over to B Street. So it's just a nice way to get people off the street and closer to the open space that the project is preserving.
And, okay, so two questions on that, the open space and the trail. The, the trail will be open to the public?
Yes, it will be.
Okay, and, and what, what open space are you kind of, you know?
The open space I'm referring to is the creek here. We had, so the project had established where the creek ends and begins, and where they could put the trail. And, so we have this trail here, and then this, this area is all dedicated open space for the creek and for the regional conservation authority.
Okay, and well, you know, the, the creek, I'm sure, has a, a, a master plan, you know? This, this, this accounts for the widening of the creek for future development, or for future use?
Yes, thank you for the question. So, the, the trail right now is a wonderful amenity, but it is temporary. As, as the plans, the federal plans for improvement of the creek move along, and hopefully we'll see that one day soon, we will see the trail go away, but it will then be replaced by a trail on each side of the creek.
Okay, and is that part of the development con, like, agreement?
So...
To replace that trail?
That'll be part of the creek project to replace it. So this trail will be here in the interim.
Okay, okay. Interesting. Well, the, in, the development does not have any, any construction or work to do in the creek?
No, they would, the plan review was, the design of the, of the plan was to ensure that they did not impact the creek.
Okay. What is, do you guys know any, any other history on the property prior to the two thousand eight development plan? Was it, was it zoned for anything different? Has it always been zoned, single-family one?
It has always been zoned residential, single-family. There has been a change from the zoning, because we are looking at a project that is now part of the downtown Marietta specific plan, and the previous, or the existing approval was based on the previously now-void historic Marietta specific plan. One of the important details about the differences between those two was, when the city went and adopted the new downtown specific plan, they changed, changed some of the street sections in part, in this area in particular, on B and New Clay Street. So, this project was also redesigned to incorporate these new street sections, which are different than the existing approval. These new street sections offer a wider parkway, so we have room for benches and trees, and it's just softer, and it creates a more inviting walking environment when you have more space.
Okay.
That was adopted in March twenty seventeen, right?
Correct.
Okay, so this is, this, this lot for the, the last twenty years has been zoned for residential, single-family homes, and, you know, it was obviously approved in two thousand eight, and that approval's good through twenty twenty-six.
Correct.
You know, up here at the planning commission, the last couple of years, we've seen so many multifamily developments kind of get, you know, rammed down our throat from the state. Is it fair to say that if a developer wanted to buy this property and rezone it to multifamily, that that would be doable?
Well, the, so the zoning is in place now for single-family one.
Right.
If someone were to purchase the project and wanted to change the zoning, they would first have to come to the city and apply for the zone change, and then we, we would have to review the matter from there and determine whether or not such a change would be...
Of course, there's a process.
Supported by staff.
Jared?
Uh, Chair Lapaglia, we have plenty of multifamily in this community, so I don't know that staff would support that type of request.
And it, and that's a good thing. I guess, I guess the point that I wanted to make was, it, it seems that multifamily development has free reigns, you know, you know? And I would hate to see that, you know, ever happen to this part of town, you know, to have a multifamily development in this area. So to me, you know, I, I like the single-family development. I mean, I think it's a win over having multifamily, so I guess that's the point I was trying to make.
And, and I think on that point, we would steer folks back to the downtown. We have twenty-four DU density in those areas, so we've already come to the planning commission and city council to ask for the appropriate densities, and we have a good range for all types of buyers and needs. So again, to your point, we're very proud to present a single-family residence tonight. It's been a while.
Been a while.
And we're really proud of this project and the hard work that went into it. But I don't, given where a housing element is, arena numbers, we're, we're in a good place. I, I don't think we're going to be cer, pursuing more rezones for more density. I think we've got plenty in the city.
I, I, I agree, and we don't, we don't, we don't want any more, so you guys are doing great. Okay, that is, that is all I have for questions. I, I, I would love to see the southern detention basin, you know, to kind of double as, as a grass field. You know, we do see it around, I know detention basins are becoming so popular in development, you know, with the, you know, soil media on top, and the, you know, vegetation growth and all that stuff, but, I don't know, if there was a way to engineer and have that double as a, as an open space that people can enjoy, you know, a grass field would be great.
You know, we've had those conversations, Lapaglia, with the state water regional control board. The way they see these basins is that they're not to have pets or other types of viruses and things in them, they're supposed to be avoided. We don't have that ability to propose double use, although it's a good idea. City, there's, are other cities and other states that I think do that, but they don't have the strong stormwater regulations that we have. But again, it's a conflict between like animal and human use versus treating stormwater and then having it discharged in a safe manner. But it's unfortunate, we don't have that option for the state of California.
Yeah, that is unfortunate. Okay, that's all I have. Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Lapaglia.
You got it?
Thank you.
Thank you, great presentation, I appreciate it, and it's, I'm going to ask several questions, I'm going to kind of put it in context of why I'm asking it, a couple of things. I'm very, very, very familiar with a project like this in another state, and these type of projects are very popular in certain areas of the country, especially growing areas. And, but this is the first one I've seen here, obviously, in Marietta with this type of a, that footprint. Secondly, the, the other, some of the questions I'm, I'm going to ask is, is putting my, my prior police and sheriff hat on, and it has to do with public safety response and things like that, and Commissioner Wojcik, you know, brought up the alleyway issues, and, and so, well, first off, is this going to, going to be an HOA, or are these publicly maintained streets, alleyways?
So, the, the streets are public streets, but there will be, the, the map is conditioned to form a HOA or a property owners' association to take care of the common areas, being the detention basin, the trail. The, the detention basin, the trail, and any other open space lots that aren't part of a residential, that aren't part of the sixty-two residential lots, so I identified, I think it's A through H lots, those would be privately maintained.
So, to my knowledge, this is, this will be kind of the first publicly maintained, if you will, alleyway in the city. Now, we have other alleyways that are basically dirt easements just to the east, you know, between First Avenue, Second Avenue, Third Avenue, a, as they go through downtown area. This will be the first one that it seems to be, to be publicly maintained and have asphalt roadways.
The, the alleyways will be privately maintained, only the streets will be publicly maintained.
Okay, okay, thank you for that clarification. Still goes to the, the access to each of the homes there. So, as I look at the different floor plans you have, some have garages on the front, some have garages on the back, is there any depth or requirement for the ones that have it on the alleyway side? How much of driveway space that they're going to have? Is there, is there a requirement that is going to make them park, or have them park in the driveway, or is that allowable based upon the, the depth of the driveway there?
So, each of the homes is, is designed to have the two required parking spaces that every single-family home needs to have, but in addition to that, I know that we're not here, we're not here to talk about the ADUs this evening, but it is important to mention that this site has designed a parking space for every ADU unit to be fully enclosed, which if someone were to develop an ADU at their existing lot, they wouldn't have to do those types of things, so.
So I guess where I'm going with this is, is the big picture is whether there's ADUs or not, and it comes down to parking, and other developments that I've seen have like commonplace parking, this one does not, right? So there's some extra spaces there. So, if they, if they did have ADUs, that's a whole nother topic, but the temptation to park in the alleyways would, is, would be somewhat overwhelming, and, and I know, Ryan, I see with the, our traffic engineer here, the existing code, ten point two four, if you look at the alleyway portion of our existing municipal code, it probably, I would suggest, would need to be upgraded to allow the police department to enforce alleyway parking if need be, rather than leave it up to the HOA. I don't see that if there's parking that occurs illegally per se in the alleyway, you know, it could restrict that fire department response to the backside if that's, if, to the address there through the alleyway. So, I, I would just offer that as a suggestion that probably would need to be required as a foundation if we, especially with this project, or other similar projects that we may see into the future.
Understood.
Make, make, make sense? So, so with that, too, some of the street naming there, just for consistency, generally speaking, just an observation, most of the numbered streets in the city are, are avenues, so First Avenue, Second Avenue, Third. I see this one, at least on the map here, says Street, and same thing with Fifth. And so, on the other side of, of B Street, they're all avenues and not streets, and, and I'm thinking about it for fire and police response for consistency, the, the street should probably be renamed with the, with the, with the suffix that matches the existing streets. Make sense? I think, Jared, you'd mentioned the trash pickup occur, will occur on the backside of the, the residence, on the alleyway side?
Sorry, let me confirm with Aaron that I didn't, because I misspoke on parking in the alleyway, so I apologize for that. But Aaron, if you could confirm, a trash service could be picked up on the, at the street and the alleyway, right? I think that was part of that logic, was, you know, trying to walk your trash cans through someone else's property is a little, that could be a little bit difficult, so we wanted that, that provision to be allowed, that they would have easy access to pick up trash.
So thank you for the question, because I was curious myself.
Yeah.
And we went back and forth about this, because we did look into how this would work. And the applicant was able to provide me a letter from Waste Management, which I was surprised, where they're going to pick up the trash along the public street, they'll come in and they'll drive along the alley, pick up the cans over there, so they'll be essentially picking up trash from the same house twice in two locations, but that's what Waste Management approved to do.
And, and that's probably because, like I said, I'm very familiar with a very similar development in another state, and the trash pickup is on the alleyway side exclusively because all the garages are on the, on the alleyway side. But here, it seems like with what you showed me, you have it on both sides, which probably requires them to do a pass on both sides.
Correct.
Okay, so, again, more of the issue with the parking and, and things like that, because they'll probably complain more than the fire department having to respond and, and say, hey, I can't get down the alley. It's going to be more the, the Waste Management that, that will complain. Street sweeping, I would imagine, would just be on the, the publicly maintained street, they're not going to do the alleyway.
Correct, they'd, they'd have to have a separate street sweeping for the alleys.
And just a little nuance, just because I, I don't know what was approved before, if the, the garages to the front and the back were, were, were part of the original project that was, was approved, but just in the conditions of approval for the requirements, maybe a suggestion, you know, fifty-one and fifty-two, you know, with the lighting and the addressing requirements, the way it's worded, it's, you know, on the garage, assuming that the garage is in the, in the, in the front of the house, the way, because all the other developments in the city have always been that way, right? And so, this one, it, it would probably cause the addressing and the lighting to be on both sides of the house, front and back.
Yeah.
And so we, just as a suggestion, we probably want to clarify that in the conditions of approval if this were to be approved. I think, oh, you, you'd mentioned kind of the stormwater and, and with the, with the creek and everything. Is there, I, on the other side of New Clay, you got that V ditch. Does this project, is it self-contained, you know, with the existing retention or detention basins on the project, and it would not, you know, feed into that V ditch on the other side? There's a storm drain V ditch on the east side of, of New Clay Street that runs all the way from B all the way down, is that, this project won't affect that, will it?
I, I don't believe so, and Mr. Ricalzaga, our senior engineer, will be able to clarify that, that for you.
So, to answer the question on the V ditch, that's correct. We made sure that there was no contribution from this property onto that ditch, so it's all contained onsite and goes to the major detention basin on the bottom of the page there.
Okay, thank you, thank you, that makes sense. Between the, between the yards, is the developer required to put consistent, or put fence between each property, wood fencing or vinyl fencing, property line fencing? Is that part of the project or requirements?
Yes, so it's part of the approval, and in the approval package, there is a fence and wall plan, so all of the homes will have a block wall along the street, along the public street, and then the interior lots will have vinyl fencing.
Okay, thank you. Another, just out of curiosity, and it has to do with the required addressing that typically comes with the house, and this is for police and law enforcement to, to find the location efficiently, but is this going to have standard or rolled curb? And the reason I ask is because a lot of times, addresses are on the, on the curb as well in front of the house, and so, if we know which one is going to be installed?
A standard curb will be installed.
Okay, thank you.
And Commissioner Verman, just to follow up on the addressing, that is a separate application that the applicants... application that the applicants meant after the fact. We do carefully route that to a lot of reviewers such as Fire and PD. I think on this one, we'll be extra careful on that and to make sure that we have the, the front and the back clearly lit and clearly addressed, because I think that's a really critical point for our response time.
Totally agree. And, and just because this is kind of the first, if this were to be approved, this would be the very first type of development like this in the city. So it's probably something that we, you know, want to make sure that we, you know, add in, into the requirements and things.
Okay.
Other than that, just one more suggestion for Mr. Stevenson. This is just a couple of blocks away from the existing, that's safer outs to school, along B Street right there where it kind of stops, I want to say maybe at like Third Avenue. You know, maybe some grants or something like that to extend it if this were to be approved, because we'd have probably more kids populations there, just, just a thought, Other than that, Mr. Fisher, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Veruven.
Vice Chair.
Vice Chair Harlan.
All right, thank you. Just three questions. In looking at this map and reading the report, it says lot sizes for the project range from fifty-two hundred to nine thousand five hundred and thirty square feet. The typical lot is five to six thousand square feet. So do we know how many of the sixty-two lots are considered typical? I'm assuming there's no lot less than five thousand square feet. And just looking at this, and you know, my colleague talked about a fence, just how close to one another are these on average?
Approximately five feet from the property line. So they're ten feet apart.
Any idea on the sixty-two lots, how many of those are considered typical?
Um.
Half, three quarters?
So at the, in the staff report, we had these project plans in here, and there's a table on the, on the front here, and it has a listing of them. So I think at a quick glance, I would say forty percent.
Okay. All right, thank you. The downtown vision that was spelled out, I think, is outstanding for the area. So kudos there. Part of it talks about encouraging pedestrians. I think in looking at this particular development, a walking path down B and C streets, there's currently no streetlights. I know we've got Kelmye Estates coming up on the horizon as well, kind of in that area. So just maybe a thought, if that's maybe on the radar screen somewhere down the road. Because I saw something in the report about the lights within the Ivy property going to be, are going to be similar to what's on downtown Murrieta, right?
They're, they're going to be exactly as what we have installed in the downtown area, yes.
Okay. But like I said, just, just a thought, right? As we build that out to have lighting so that folks can actually walk at night, I think for a safety thing would be nice. One last piece on the, looks like we got one public comment, and I know you guys follow the communication process as you always do. Mr. Veruven and I happened to see a couple of the signs that were compromised. I know we shared that with Jarrett. I don't know if you saw that as well. I know the press enterprise was posted. You sent the mailings out, what, three hundred feet in that particular area, which it's a little sparse, right? So I guess the question I had is, this could be kind of exciting for the, the merchants in downtown. Were they informed as well? Are they aware of this potential project?
It, only if they were within the three hundred feet, but also we do post it on, in the city, in the newspaper, and it's on our website, so.
And Commissioner, we do have separate meetings. There's a downtown group, and we have a marketplace. We do thread carefully with our merchants, letting them know that we do have things like the amphitheater, Adams Avenue Project, our expansion of our library. We do try to communicate those, because folks have been waiting a long time for these types of projects so that we can have some more buoyant commercial activity. So I believe that they are aware of a lot of the hard work that the Commission and City Council and staff are trying to do to make sure that we have a continued successful growth of our downtown.
Outstanding. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Chair Harlan. I have just one question. Are there any SEQA issues with this development?
There are, there are no SEQA issues. We, the staff reviewed the original SEQA document and prepared an addendum. And the addendum identified that there were no, no additional impacts from what was previously analyzed.
Thank you.
In fact, Chair, this project is better than it was twenty years ago because of the increase in state law, meaning stormwater treatment and other, like landscaping plan designs of the project. We feel that the pedestrian friendly would lead to reduced emissions over time. So we do feel that this project is better under SEQA than the original, but it meets all the standards of state law.
Do you know when the developer of this project now purchased the, purchased this Or is that a question I can ask him when he comes up to the podium?
We, we could ask the applicant that question.
Okay, I'll ask, I'll ask him then.
Chair Fisher, what was that question again? Could you repeat that question? Are you asking when the developer purchased the property?
Yes.
And I think to note, it's actually purchased from the city. So the city obtained it from, I think through a bankruptcy sale. So we got it from the original developer. So the city held on to it for several years as the housing authority, and then sold it just recently, I think within the last year or two, to the developer.
Okay. All right, thank you. That clarifies it. Thank you, Commissioners, for your questions to staff. Staff, good presentation. It's time for the applicant, if possible, Diversified Pacific Development Group, LLC, to give their presentation. And there is a time limit that will be given on that. I believe it's ten minutes, if I'm not mistaken.
It should be much quicker than that. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Nolan Legio.
Is your mic on? Your mic. No, push the button.
Down by the microphone.
By the microphone. Down.
It's an updated microphone.
Okay.
All right, you guys can hear me now?
Yes.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Nolan Legio. I'm the Director of Forward Planning for Diversified Pacific. We are a Rancho Cucamonga-based developer and home builder. Have been developing in the inland empire, San Bernardino Riverside County, for over thirty years. First off, I want to thank city staff, Aaron and Jarrett and Rick and the rest of the staff has, have spent, you know, a ton of time working with us in this project. You know, they've been very attentive to the details of this project, and it's really resulted in something we're really proud of and, and hope the city's really proud of as well. So thank you for, to them and, and their report today. A little bit, and some of the questions started to, to be asked about this, but a history of our involvement in the site. So as Mr. Watts indicated, this was, property was owned by the Murrieta Housing Authority, controlled by the City of Murrieta. We started conversations with the city in early 2020 to purchase this property. And then the City Council approved a contract with us in, in middle to late 2020 for the purchase of this property. And one of, one of the reasons the city chose us to move forward with this project, even though there was a, a variety of, of offers, was, was really our vision for the property. As has been indicated, there was an existing entitlement on that site from 2008 that included, you know, the, the alleys and, and some of the elements from the very beginning. The city was conscious, and we are, I think, if not the only, offer that was willing to preserve that entitlement and, and move forward with that. You know, being a 2008 entitlement, there's a lot of, you know, other agency laws that, that resulted in, needed necessary updates to the site. There was some California State Water jurisdiction that we redesigned to avoid. Obviously, the, as Jarrett indicated, the water quality standards have changed dramatically from when this project was originally approved. So it wasn't ever our intention to even revise this, the site to begin with. But as we kind of started rolling into it, there was, you know, necessities under state law that we had to do, and there were, there were big enough changes that resulted in, in needing an amendment to the, to the site plan. So once we started that process, there was, you know, some, some efficiencies that were made, which, which resulted from the, the jump from sixty to sixty-two. But really, it was our intention to preserve many of the core elements of the existing site plan. One of the big changes and the biggest part of our vision from the very beginning, though, was incorporating a lot of the state laws on ADUs into the product. So that is something that, you know, any individual who owns a single-family home can build an ADU right now on, on any house in California, but it hasn't really been done at the, you know, the subdivision level. And this was a unique project, you know, because the alleys, which, you know, I've heard a lot of comments on, there's, you know, concerns with safety or lighting in alleys. And, you know, I, I agree with a lot of that. But the, the ADU concept that, you know, we were able to incorporate based on some of those laws kind, kind of completely changes that concept, because now you're, you're putting a, a front door to that alley as well. So rather than, you know, having twenty or twenty-eight feet with block walls on both sides, you know, there's houses that are further set back from that street, you know, with front doors and windows. So it, it completely changes the nature of that alley, and it's, it's something we're really excited about. I mean, we spent a couple of years with the city really refining this, this application and, you know, our original vision, you know, the city chose us three years ago, where we're even more excited, you know, today, as we, we've really dove into the details of, of all of it. Couple other questions that were brought up, parking in particular. So Aaron's right, our requirement is, in street is a single-family home, even with the ADU, we're required to have two parking stalls, you know, but as a developer, we think about the livability of the communities we design. So, you know, two, two parking stalls wasn't sufficient to us. So all of, not only do we have the two-car garages, but we made every ADU has its own parking spot as well. Two of the floor plans have their own garage, and, and the third one has its own designated parking spot off the back. So there, every, every ADU still has parking that's not on the alleyway. And I think the vast majority of them, due to the, the size of the lots, have driveways as well that park two cars. So I mean, we're talking five, six parking spots per unit, significantly above what, what's required. But again, you know, if someone's living back there, we realize it would be a pain after go find street parking and walk to that. So that was, that was something that was, you know, critical to, to our design. Couple other questions, lot sizes was, was a question. Really, it was really in nature, the lot sizes of what, you know, the existing entitlement had and, and maintaining that to the best of our ability. The basin and realigning the streets to avoid certain jurisdictional features, you know, kind of pushing, pulled some of the lot sizes, but the vast majority of them are much larger. I think only six or seven of them are below fifty-five hundred, eight or nine are below six thousand, and the average lot size is somewhat closer to seven thousand. So the, the, you know, the forty percent, Aaron, is probably pretty close to accurate, but the other sixty to seven percent are much larger than, than the standard lot, not, not, not smaller. The detention basin, I, I, I agree with you that dual using those is, is, you know, something that's really creative and something that, you know, as designers would be nice to have. It, it can be done still on more of the regional level when you have like giant city-owned. On projects like this, it's really hard, though, because you have, you know, so much slope to get the necessary storage components of it, that it just creates a whole bunch of, you know, liability concerns on having steep grades. And then there's, you know, the functional process of treating the water. So I mean, we did design the trail around it. It's view fencing, so people will be able to walk around and look through the open space, unfortunately, based on, you know, state requirements and, and, you know, some liability concerns, you can't make it usable. But we did, we do try to incorporate, you know, the, looking at it with the trails and stuff like that. Other than that, if you have any specific questions of, of me, more than happy to answer them. I also have a few people I'd like to introduce from, from our team. We have Jason Holt, project manager with Diversified, who's been shepherding this project, you know, the day-to-day with, with Aaron. Over the last couple of years, we also have Justin Brown, David Evans and Associates. He's our civil engineer. So if we have any more technical civil engineering questions, he's happy to answer them. We also have Ezekiel Cooley and Yara Fisher with Helix Environmental. They process all the environmental permitting as well as the SEQA document. So our, our whole technical team is, is here. If you got any, you know, specific questions, but anything else, you know, high level about the project, I'm, I'm happy to answer, and I appreciate the time.
Chairman Fisher, if staff could interject, we would recommend that the applicant ask the chair for up to ten minutes of rebuttal time, in case there's questions that they have to return after they close the session.
Agree.
I agree. I, I think I answered most of the questions that I heard to staff. But if there's any more from public comment or, or future from the Commission, happy to come back up here and answer them.
We'll see if any, see if any of the Commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Veruven?
Yes, I, I have just a few. Just as I mentioned before, I'm familiar with a development just like this in another state. And, and familiar with the ADU concept with that project as well, too. And the way they have it set up there is typically the ADU is like above a garage that's accessed on the alleyway side. And that's typically decided upon when the homeowner goes to purchase the home. It's an option, they can add the ADU or choose not to. Is that kind of the concept, since you brought the, brought the ADU issue up? Is that kind of the, the strategy, or are they going to automatically be built with one, or only the ones that have garage access to the backside and above the garage?
So it's definitely the concept, and it's kind of, there's, there's two separate floor, or two different versions of that, because the, the single-story obviously doesn't have, you know, the second-story ADU. But they're still, all, all the lots, you know, right now are still one lot, so they only be owned by one, one owner. So it could be served as an ADU. It could where, you know, you're renting it out. It could be your mother-in-law suite, where you have a family member or a college student living in that, that you, that you know. Or, you know, you can knock a wall down and make it a, a, you know, whatever, whatever room you want it to be. So the, I mean, the floor plan is, is designed as an ADU. It has its own separate parking from the alley, its own separate private rear space. But, you know, the relationship of, of the owner of the main unit and who's in that is, is kind of subject to who, who's, who's living there. But it, it definitely provides for all those flexibilities.
So my question, it sounds like what your, what your answer is, is they'll all be built with the ability to have an ADU. It's not an option where they can decide to, at the time of purchase, to either have it added at construction or not have it. It, it's going to be automatically built that way?
It, it's not intended to be an option, no, but it would, how, how they use the ADU would be, you know, subject to the individual owner of each parcel.
You mentioned the alleyway thing, and again, that's kind of my, I just, you know, some concerns with it, but I understand the concept and, and I actually like it. I mean, the way that it, it's set up. But you mentioned the lighting, and which is why I brought up the lighting with the back and the front, to have basically those requirements duplicated with the addresses and lighting. But separately, is there, is there a plan to have poles, street poles, on the alleyway? Because you had mentioned the lighting on, on the alley.
So I, I know there's carriage lights on all the front, or the fronts of the ADUs, or, I mean, the back of the, the back of the house, but, you know, it's, it will look like the front of a house if you're coming from the alley. So there's carriage lights there, which provide light to the alleys. I don't believe, and Aaron, you can confirm or wrong, there's, there's separate pole lights in the alleys.
Okay. And then the last one with the alleyways, again, Aaron had mentioned, the streets are going to be publicly maintained, but the alleyways would not. And so when you have that traffic there, there, the alleyways are going to have to be maintained at some point into the future. So that would kind of insinuate that there's probably going to, or a plan to have an HOA, because those would have to be maintained and re-asphalated and, and whatnot. So is that, is that your plan?
Yeah, either an HOA that, you know, puts away some type of reserve or some type of, you know, property owners association.
So that, that definitely would happen?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that it would be maintained, and then obviously the city can do its part to make sure that there's, you know, access, emergency vehicle access would be able to get to, you know, homes on both sides of the property if, if there is ADUs and there's addressing, those type of things like that. Is, it would have the same addressing system, you know, so that way, or is there an A and a B? So if law enforcement shows up to the front, but it's really the place in the back, is there any differentiation between that? I know that.
That, that's something that, you know, that detail hasn't been worked out yet.
Right.
But, you know, our, our assumption is there would be, you know, a, a half for an A and a B. So, you know, there was a designated address for, for the, for the ADU.
And that's how it is in cities in the LA area, what I, you know. And, and that's how it is in cities in the LA area, what I, you know, where they have those type of things like that. Again, this is such a new concept here. So that's why I'm asking these questions and thinking, you know, how, how we get resources to the right place at the right time.
No, we, I mean, we, we definitely understand this is, you know, an, an innovative product. And, you know, it's kind of a product of, you know, some of the policies, you know, California has passed. But at the same time, we, you know, we're, we're excited about this innovative project. I think the city was when we started three years ago. And as we started getting into the details, we realized, you know, there, there's a lot of technical nuance that you gotta think about, uh, differently than your, your standard single-family. But, um, I think between our team and, and the city's diligence to, you know, every little thing from trash to curbs and, um, you know, your idea on, on address signs, um, was, was, was well noted. Um, I think we've, we've uncovered almost every, every stone we, we can to, on how this would function, how this would park, where people are, are operating it, you know, and make the site as, um, you know, successful as possible.
Yeah, I'd, I'd just finish with this. I, it's a good concept. Um, i- i- when you look in other areas, growing areas of the country, I'll say specifically the Nashville metropolitan area, these type of developments are very, um, very popular.
Yeah, we, we, we think it'll be a, an asset to the downtown Marietta specific plan and, you know, the vision of, of Marietta. And that, and, uh, that's a good point. That was also an element that resulted in a lot of the design tweaks, was that downtown Marietta specific plan being adopted with, you know, street sections changing pretty dramatically, um, and things like that. You know, our, our goal of preserving the existing entitlement and not changing much became more and more difficult. Um, and that was another one of the elements. And I, you know, I think it ended with a much better product and, you know, glad we went through that. But, um, you know, that, that's the reason we're here today is, you know, some of those changes that were kind of, you know, forced that the project had to make.
Right. Thank you.
Vice Chair Harlan?
Well, thank you for the additional specifics and for bringing your team along. I know it's a, the distance from Rancho Cucamonga. And we certainly appreciate your partnership and support of the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
So, from two thousand eight to today, the, the footprint, the overall amount of land's unchanged, right? Same footprint.
Correct, yeah.
The square footage of the homes have been increased a little bit and you added homes.
Correct. Uh, it's two lots were added and it was, some streets were realigned to avoid. So particularly there's a, you know, a jurisdictional California wetland on the far right, um, that the, you know, wasn't contemplated in two thousand eight. Um, and it just involves a whole bunch of permitting. So we, we did our best to avoid it and ended up kind of tweaking the streets. Um, so between some of those, you know, there was empty spaces that, you know, planned two lots. And actually, the original sequo document from two thousand eight even had sixty-two lots planned for it. Um, so what, I, I mean, the, the, the original sequo document had still had, had anticipated sixty-two lots. I think it was changed, you know, on the fly at a, at a public hearing, you know, fifteen years ago. Um, but even the, the previous sequo document did, did have sixty-two lots planned.
Okay. But I understand, there were sixty though that were actually.
Sixty were, was, was formally approved, yes.
So then what shrank?
Uh, streets. There was, there was, uh, an additional, I think there was two, two more, at least one more connection to New Clay and one more connection to B Street. So there's just all, you know, the, the street layout was, was definitely made a lot more efficient than it was before. You know, the, the project still has, you know, two points of ingress and egress, which is more than sufficient for, you know, sixty, sixty lots and ADUs. Um, but before it had, you know, so many outlets. Uh, and again, we are going to keep it as is, but once all the changes started to be necessary for WQMP and, and street sections and things like that, it just kind of snowballed and, okay, let's just make the site more efficient now that we're making all these changes to begin with, sort of thing.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you very much. I have no questions.
Thank you, Commissioner.
At this point in time, we're going to move to public testimony at seven fifteen PM. Madam Secretary, do we have any public comments, starting with proponents, then opponents, and then those that are neutral in that order?
Thank you, Chair. There are no proponents, four opponents and one neutral. Um, starting with opponents, Penny Miller, who has additional donated time for a total of six minutes.
Okay. Each public comment is required to be a three-minute cycle unless someone else is determined and given your time to them, which is the case here. So Ms. Miller or?
Hello. My name is Penny Miller. I have lived in Marietta now on the backside back there for almost thirty years. We, um, are a little concerned about this. There's a couple of things that we are concerned about. First of all, this isn't the first home area that's being built out there. My concern is you guys are putting these homes five feet, so basically ten feet apart from each other. We're asking in regards to the safety part, I know that we have a great police, great fire here, but we did have a fire out there in a tree and took the fire department over ten minutes to get there. You guys are going to have these houses so close and unfortunately my home is right on the other side of that wash. What is the safety measures that are coming in to help us back there? Also with that being said, this was supposed to be country out here. We have been known for being country out here. This is where our horses are at. We have our horse trails out there. We have the equestrian center out there. You guys keep pushing us and pushing us and pushing us farther away to where eventually we're not going to have any horse property. There is horse properties on New Clay right now. So when you bring in these subdivisions, where are all these kids going? You guys have sixty-two homes going in there now. You have forty-five homes going in on Calmia and you have approximately another sixty, from my understanding, that are going to try to go in down on Ivy Street. These, these cars that you're putting in and, and unfortunately we were not able to see the map. They didn't send that to us to see the outlets. We don't see the outlets on how their people are going to get in and out with all these cars. Now you're talking ADUs too. So you're not talking sixty-two homes. You're basically talking a hundred and twenty-four, all right? If each house by itself has two cars, there's a hundred and twenty-four, you add another sixty-two just for that area. We're already congested enough out there. We don't have the road structure. We don't have streetlights. We don't have sidewalks out there. So my question is, how are we gonna maintain the safety out there? Not only for the people who are moving into these homes, but for us who live out there. Also, what is the cost of these homes? Is this going to be low-income housing? What is the median cost? What is the average cost per family's median income that's going in there? What is this going to have the impact on the small schools that we have in this area? I really think people need to look at this and understand that we, as a community, are supposed to be country. That's what this site is for. So you guys keep cramming us in there and we feel like we're being kind of pushed out. So our property values, as you continue to put these smaller homes in there, that become less and less, you're affecting our property values. So our property values right now are great. They're, I'm not going to complain about them. But if you bring in homes that we can't even tell what the price is going to be, and then on top of that, you put ADUs in there too, which are basically just rental units where people are going to be renting to low-income homes. We have a higher risk of, like he said, we're going to have more crime back there, especially when you put the alleyways in. We already have homeless people living in the wash as it is that we're constantly dealing with. Now you're going to have nowhere for the kids to go because as he said, the park is not their responsibility. And I don't see a park in that plan at all for that hundred and twen- or sixty-some kids that are going to be living there. So where are all these kids going to go? Are they going to come back where we live and start, you know, running up and down our streets? We don't want it, okay? We have our own problems back on our streets. So I have a lot of questions here and I know I'm not going to be able to get to them all because I've got two pages worth. So I'm actually going to get with this gentleman later and kind of go through my questions so I can get them answered. But my main question to you guys is, who's looking at the safety in this area? What is the cost of these homes? They're not telling us that. And from what our math is, we'd like to see their math because we're looking at it as three-point-five homes per half acre, based on what they're telling us measurement-wise, not three-point-five homes per acre. So we kind of wanted this to be explained to us a little bit more if we possibly could, right? Um, one more thing is the water. You guys keep talking about the water. Are these going to be on wells like the rest of us out there? Are they going to be on city water? What is the curbs going to be like? And are we going to put in any stop signs right now, along with the two bridges that sit out there? Those bridges, when you start putting in a lot of homes, you're going to, we're going to have a problem with that bridge. That's an older bridge. We have Ivy Street, we have B Street. They both have bridges on them. Ivy Street's bridge is new, but B Street's is not new. Um, I think that is something that also needs to be addressed. And then they say they have this path on the wash. Well, the plan for the wash was to expand that. How far is it going to expand out into their area? Are you going to push it in and take out our backyards? So I, you know, I kind of want some answers to this stuff because as you put in home divisions, you're going to start approaching onto my property and then we're going to get eminent domain and then we're going to have another issue with that, okay? That's kind of where I'm at right now. If I could get some of those answered and I will get with him with a whole bunch more afterwards. All right. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Chairman Fisher and Commissioners, we can be responsive to some of those comments. The, uh, minimum side yard setback is five feet. It complies. Um, as for the, uh, project type, this is market rate. The applicant, we'd have to ask the applicant if they've done any market studies as to what our average cost would be. We have, or the applicant is designing a horse trail and interim standards so that it would keep folks away from the busy streets. And again, this is a pedestrian-oriented project where we're orienting them to the downtown. So we believe that the amenities that they're providing are safe. We've looked at this from a site distance perspective. So with, um, drivers going in this area, we don't feel that that would be a conflict with the proposed children going to school or pedestrians. Um, the project does get serviced from, uh, Western Municipal Water District. They can provide service to this project because we require a service availability form that's checked off by the district. We also noticed them, uh, of any concerns on the conditioning. And the applicant still has a lot of work to do. You're conditioning a project tonight where the applicant has to go back to that district and demonstrate that they have their water, um, facilities that they can put in. If there's anything I missed, please let me know.
Thank you very much. Are there any more, uh, public comments?
Yes. Um, April Thompson?
Is this an opponent?
Opponent, yes.
Okay.
Hi, thank you. My name is April Thompson. Um, I actually live directly across the street from this field. So we look at how beautiful it is every day. We look at all the birds and animals and people that use this land, our community is there all the time. People take pictures out there, graduation pictures. It is a loved area in our, in our little diamond in the rough over there. Um, so I'm concerned about all of these homes going in, not just because I have to look at them, but because it is, I think, going to affect our wildlife. Not to mention, like, she said, the children that go over there and play all the time. You know, they, they're there already. They don't need a park. I feel like it's already there. Um, safety, I definitely agree with how many people are going to be coming in and what is this going to do to our streets, traffic-wise in general. Um, and my other question is, isn't that a flood zone? So my house, I have to pay for insurance because that's a hundred-year flood zone. Will that be changed, I guess is my big question? And what is going to happen to the animals that go there? I mean, we have vultures that come out and eat out there all the time. So now you have all these homes going in, what's going to happen, all these birds? I mean, huge flocks of birds every day. So that's, I feel like that's going to impact that. So that's my, my input. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any more opponents?
Yes, um, for opponents, Chris Tusa.
Welcome.
Thank you. Um, my name's Chris Tusa, live across the street. That was my wife. Um, the main concern that we have, but beyond the safety, is the flood zone part. We pay six hundred dollars a month in flood insurance. Now, if they bring these in, I imagine they'd build them up, say, I don't want everyone else paying that. That puts us farther underwater, not out of the water. It's going completely backwards for everyone that already lives there. It doesn't seem like it's going to help. It doesn't seem, I mean, maybe if you did six, seven big ranch homes, it'd be different. You know, but you're, you're literally filling what we call Lake Marietta. Every time it rains, that place floods. Where's all that going to go now? I know they say it's going to, their rainwater is going to drain out over. Now that's all hardscape. It's not going to soak in. That's going to increase the flooding. I mean, to me, it's common sense and it's a big mistake letting this go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Um, for opponents, Monica Mustos.
Hello.
Welcome.
I live on B Street, uh, just west of Washington since, uh, twenty fourteen. Um, Old Town is charming and eclectic as it is. I didn't, I knew nothing about this till someone put this lovely flyer at my, on my gate. And I am vastly opposed to this whole idea, but it seems like it's already a done deal. We're just working out the details. And you can call it single-family, but it's basically, uh, multi-family dwellings. You know, just, I mean, looking at that map, I agree. It should be, it should be in keeping with the area, which is, you know, ranch-style and older homes. My house was built in nineteen thirty-six. Um, so, no, 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 no. I don't like this at all. But, um, it's going to be more people and so many more cars. Three hundred more cars easily, easily. And currently, B Street is basically just a drag strip. A lot, there are no stop signs from Washington to New Clay. And they turn the corner off Washington, not everybody of course, but there's a significant number of people. And then they just punch it and head on down to New Clay. And I've talked about traffic signals and stop signs and berms or what do you call those things? But nothing changes. Anyway, um, I don't know. I just, I just think it's tragic. I don't want to see it. I don't want it. And I don't think there's anything I can do about it.
Thank you.
Uh, this concludes opponent comments. There is one neutral comment, Teresa Beris.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Teresa Blyphus and I love historic Marietta. I've lived here since twenty fif- or since twenty fifteen. I bought a little house down on Fourth Street. And if you take a look at Fourth Street, there's no curbs, there's no gutters, there's no lights. And it goes directly into this development. So they may say they're going to come down B Street, but they're not. They're going to come down Calmia, turn and go in front of my house and go into that development. Half the year, it turns into a cul-de-sac because of the drainage. So then what's going to happen? Then all these people are going to park on our street where there's no curbs, no gutters. Because we're looking at sixty-two homes. I don't care if you call them, maybe an ADU, maybe you're not an ADU. But we all know what happens on Adams where all of the multi-family homes are. That's going to be my front parking, where there's not real curbs, there's not real parking. And that's where they're going to be parking and walking down there. I, on the average of one or two nights a week, walk down B Street. I frequent all of the restaurants and stuff and I love it. I love our Thursday nights. But you add a hundred and plus dwellings, that's not going to work. I looked through the paperwork that was on the website and there was a resolution that on page nine or ten, it says in there that the lot sizes were going to stay consistent with what's in the area. What's in the area is half-acre lots. These are not half-acre lots. It, and somebody, one of you guys asked how many homes were within the five-thousand range or how many were in the seven? There are eighteen of these lots that are higher than seven thousand. It said in the original documentation that they wanted to have the lot sizes be seven thousand. Some of them can go down to fifty-two hundred, but the majority were supposed to be seven thousand. And another of you asked what happened when they rearranged it? Well, they had to, to shrink all of the lot sizes because they had to have the, the drainage basin. I get that. Do we need 62 homes? No. Do we need to stay at 7,000 feet? Probably. Rearrange it.
Thank you.
Put something there.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, we have additional neutral comments. Kason Klein.
Welcome, Mr. Klein.
Thank you. I wanna put some more historical perspective on this. My family moved here in 1983. My stepdad served on the original historic specific plan, served on planning commission. I served on planning commission from '02 to '05. Originally, the specific plan called for smaller lots in this area. Speaking to density, you know, one of the reasons why we haven't gotten development in the historic downtown specific plan area is, one, much of the area is in the floodplain, and it's extremely expensive to bring property up and out of the floodplain. Therefore, you need more density. We know that also, while there's been a ton of development going on in the city, development has lacked in Western Municipal Water District's area. And that's because Western Municipal Water District doesn't have, hasn't kept up with its dilapidated infrastructure. I know that because I sat on the Blue Ribbon Committee back in 2005 that took it from Marietta Municipal, Marietta County Municipal Water District to Western Municipal Water District. So, you know, when you look at these things, I, I guess as a planning commissioner, you know, the first thing is, is it consistent with your general plan and, and your development code? Clearly it is. Could the applicant come back and go for higher density? Without a doubt. So does this fit the character? Is it consistent with the specific plan from when the city incorporated? Appears to me that it does. Why do we need the density? Well, it comes down to, does the project pencil, right? One of the opponents asked for, asked the question about, what are they gonna sell the houses for? Great question, because while we as residents are concerned with our property value, developers, proper, projects have to pencil. And alls we have to do is look at the downtown area and surrounding area, and what do we have? Nothing. To the point that the last commenter made about the streets being cul-de-sacked off during rainwa, during wintertime? Sorry, city. But when the city does that, they're in violation of the Clean Water Act because they're diverting flows. That's exactly what that is. That K rail was donated to the city by then First District Supervisor Bob Buster to prevent flooding in, in the old town area. And so that's exactly what the city does, is they put the K rail in to block those roads to channelize the water that overbanks Line F and sheet flows across the property between Line F and Calmia and channelizes it down into Marietta Creek. And I'll finish on this. The Army Corps of Engineers about, a little more than 20 years ago, came up with a realignment of Marietta Creek. It's not gonna happen in our lifetime, and I was recently told by Mayor DeForest that she has asked Congressman Isa to remove this portion from that plan. So, you know, if, if that even goes into your consideration, that's something that you should know about. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any more comments?
Yes, um, for neutral comments, Catherine Winger.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Catherine Winger. I live at Fifth and B Street, just across from this area. I live with my husband and three young children, and we frequent this area all the time and walk through this meadow. My concerns are with the lighting in this area as well as sidewalks. I believe you mentioned safe routes to school or something like that, talking about possible grants we can do to continue sidewalks or lighting in that area to make it safer for walking around to downtown, school, or through these trails that are proposed. And my concerns are also with Fifth Street access to this lot. So what I believe on the map, I think it's an alleyway where Fifth would enter, and Fifth is one of the streets that is closed off for the wintertime. So would that alleyway be named a street, Fifth Street or Fifth Avenue? And I am concerned about, as someone else did mention, cars speeding up and down B frequently on New Clay, frequently, and when Fifth is open as well. So I'm just concerned about that carrying through Fifth Street to the, the, this proposed Other than that, that's my main concerns. And also, while I do like, I love the thought of growth with these new homes, and it does sound like it is a done deal, if there is ways, like others have said, to increase the lot size, to preserve some of the natural beauty of this meadow and land, that I think that would be very much valued from the people in the area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any more comments?
This concludes public comments.
Would the applicant want to have a 10-minute rebuttal? Welcome back.
Thank you. Just, just have a minute or two on a couple of points. As I know it wasn't discussed a ton in, in our presentations, but as you can imagine, there's, you know, a, a very detailed engineering review process that this project went through from both the city and also WMWD. And, you know, obviously that resulted in, you know, the acceptable amount of infrastructure to support this project. This project also installs a lot of infrastructure for both, from, you know, B Street and New Clay, significant improvements to those, those streets fronting, fronting our project. And, you know, Western, I think there were some conversations about their infrastructure. We're installing a 12-inch water line all the way from Calmia all the way down to Ivy Street. It'll serve this project, but is, is, you know, a master plan facility with WMWD. So, I mean, infrastructure's been very thoroughly analyzed for this project, and then obviously this project's required to pay, you know, city development impact fees. I think a lot of the concerns brought up are more, more regional in nature, which, you know, we're handling everything, our, our impacts our project creates. But then, you know, we'll pay development impact fees to address a lot of the more regional city, city concerns, so we'll, we'll, we'll pay into our part on, you know, some little more longer-term solutions to that. Lighting, the projects required to meet the downtown Marietta specific plan, lighting standards, which, you know, is, is lighting spacing 100 feet from each other, which is much more than you would standard see on a, on, on a typical street. So that's something that was addressed and reviewed by the, by the city and incorporated into the project plans. And then lastly, the flood zone. So part of those improvements we're doing to, to B Street and New Clay, and the dome of the site does, we've been processing through FEMA, it will be removed from the flood zone, the 100-year flood zone, so it, the improvements get it out of that, and we're, the project's conditioned to do a CLOMAR through FEMA before we can move forward with the project. So FEMA will have to approve the removal before we can move forward.
And does that, does that help any of the surrounding neighbors? Like your property getting pulled out of the flood zone?
Marginally, but I think it's, you know, one of the commentators indicated, you know, the biggest, the biggest improvement will be, you know, the Army Corps' plan on Marietta Creek itself, which was a plan that was done in the 90s, and they've done bits and portions of it. You know, it's, it's a much larger, you know, nine-figure improvement that's, you know, way out of the scale of a project like this to, to resolve, you know, the long-term drainage issues. But for the most part, it's, it's, you know, tackling the individual project and immediate, immediately adjacent, but it's not, it's not gonna help like a large, a large swath around it now.
Sure.
It, it, it would not make it worse.
Chairman, we have planning commission rules of conduct. I expressly demand.
Yeah, we have a code of conduct that, there is no comments available from the audience, please. Thank you. Your time has been given to you, and you must remain quiet from that point on.
That's it. Thank you, Commissioner.
I, I do have a, just because one of the speakers brought up a question of, there was two feet between a structure or the garage.
Right.
And, and the alleyway. And, and then you had, you had talked about the driveways on the backside, there would be enough driveway space for, for parking before you got to a garage. Could you clarify maybe some of the?
Yeah, so, so the way that the alley section is, is there's a 20-foot of paved asphalt, and then there's four feet on each side that will have, you know, a concrete walkway. So that's, that's your 28-foot section, you know, from concrete walkway to concrete walkway. There would not be allowed parallel parking in that 28-foot section. From that 20-foot section, the minimum dimension to the front of the, the ADU is two feet. The vast majority of them far, far exceed that. But the way the ADUs are designed, and you have to look at, you know, the specific floor plans, is, you know, they're not the entire width of the lot. You know, there may be a, a two-thirds of the width of the lot, or half the width of the lot, and the other portion will have a driveway or the garage. You know, there's, there's a, there's a garage there, so even though it might be two feet behind the walkway or the ADU's version of a sidewalk, you know, it's still a garage and a parking spot. So all of them have minimum dimension, 18-foot parking spaces. Just the, the front of the ADU will be minimum that dimension.
Since we don't have any pictures of what you're trying to describe, I'm trying to visualize it based upon what I heard. So you got a 50-foot wide lot, of which maybe, let's say, half of it is, is, maybe has the ADU on the backside is what you're describing, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so, so then on the other 25 feet of that width, that might be the driveway for that ADU that encroaches onto the back of the property?
Driveway or enclosed garage.
Or enclosed garage, okay. So, so the parking wouldn't necessarily be needed, well, you can't have it, you know, based upon the 28 feet and the 20 plus the four, that's this kind of neutral sidewalk zone slash emergency access.
Yeah, there's, there's no, no parallel parking on that at all, and that would be on, you know, the property owner.
But, but to the, but to the point that Speaker came up and said, so where the front door is of that ADU is really two feet from the?
Um, I'm looking at it right now, all of them have articulation, so, you know, the ADU will kind of articulate, and you'll, you'll walk in, you know, five feet or 10 feet and, and make a right or a left into the front door. None of them, none of them are, one of the three is directly there, the other two are more of like a side entry to the floor plan.
So the front door might be more on the side, not directly on the alley, facing the alleyway?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, I, I've just, you know, I, I, I think my concern, what I, obviously, you know, the front door opening and you're, and you step out and.
You're in the walkway.
And, and you're in the alleyway, right? So, okay, I, I just wanted to clarify that.
And it's just a, a few of the, the lots. I think it's over half of the lots, not only two feet, but are wide enough that you'll be able to park a second car back there. You know, so you'll have, you're designated 18-foot, and then there are another 18 feet from the alleyway, so you actually, those, those, you know, you'll have a second driveway on the back. So there, there is a, a chunk of, you know, tighter lots, but the vast majority of them are, you know, in the mid 6,000s and accommodate multiple parking spaces on both sides.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Is there a selling price range that you can share with the audience?
There's not. I mean, it's, it's market rate, so, you know, whatever the market will bear, these, these will be sold for. You know, obviously, there's a long time between now and the actual selling of these units. It's, you know, we're just starting the journey of developing final engineering, so it's a while before we're even, you know, moving earth there, and then the process of, of developing all the infrastructure we talked about. So it, it's a while, and we don't like, you know, while we have internal guesses, speculating on pricing a year or two from now is, is not something we like to, you know, publicly disclose. I will say, you know, being part of new developments personally for about a decade, and, you know, our project for 30 years, new development, even, you know, if it's somewhat denser than some of the surrounding communities, is, is typically higher, and sometimes significantly higher than the resales. And I'd say pretty much every single project we've had, you know, dramatically increased the, the, the property values of properties adjacent to, to the projects we've done, and I, I, I wouldn't expect this to be any exception to that.
One more, as you're talking, and again, the alleyway, I keep going back to that. And what you described, okay, the 20-foot of asphalt and plus the four feet on, on either side. So there's not gonna be any curbing in the alleyway, you can't have that.
Correct, there's a, there's a V ditch in the, the center of the alley, it drains in.
Okay, yeah, so, so there wouldn't be any curbs, so then there wouldn't be a red curb, you know, to prevent parking, so that'd have to be signage or anything like. Again, I'm just trying to visualize this as a, you know, if law enforcement, fire has to go out there, access enforcement, those type of things like that, this is a concept that we haven't seen here in Marietta, so this is why I'm, I don't have any pictures to kind of visualize, so I, I just wanna accurately describe it.
Yeah, no, it makes sense. I, I, there's not curbs, I wouldn't expect there to be red curb.
Right.
I mean, maybe you could paint the edge of the sidewalk red, but that seems somewhat strange.
Right.
So, yeah, it would be done through no parking, and again, you know, there's gonna be other property owner or an HOA, and that's private lots. So, I mean, there'll be a mechanism, you know, for them to enforce, and obviously, if the problem's significant enough, then, you know, city codes, code enforcement or, or towing is, is, you know, under the purview of, of the property owner, HOA.
We, we don't have the clock anymore for this rebuttal? What is the timeframe?
I, I'm, I'm just answering questions. I, I'm, I'm done with my rebuttal.
Yeah, I was just, I, again, just clarifying questions, and, and I'm just looking at it from a practical sense. I, you know, yeah, it's nice the HOA can, you know, enforce things, but when it comes down to things, it's, in some respects, sometimes it's gonna be a law enforcement issue.
Yeah, uh, uh, understood.
Okay, okay, that's it, thanks.
Just real quick question. I started this off with, nothing good happens in alleyways. The, you said there's no lighting, street lighting in the alleyway? Did I understand that correctly?
There's no street lighting proposed in the alleyway, but there is, you know, lights on the, the, the front of the houses there, and, you know, it's a tighter section, so we, we believe they'd be sufficiently lit.
But those lights in front of the houses, I would control that light as a homeowner. Like if I turn it off, the alleyways are dark, right?
Typically, they're, you know, censored and things like that, but I, I guess you would be able to control turning it off.
So are you opposed to putting in lights? HOA's gonna flip the electric bill.
Yeah, it, it just becomes a, because there's no, like, formal parkway, and that dimension's a lot tighter, we, we don't believe they're necessary. And, and I do get the, you know, the negative, I live in Upland, California, and there's, there's alleys all over it. And, and those alleys, you know, are only rear-loaded garages and then six-foot block walls. So you're walking in those, and you have six-foot walls on both sides of a 20-foot section. So I can see how that, you know, would have safety concerns. The nature of this is, it's, it's almost like a, you know, of, it is a front yard. You know, there's a, a, a front door, there's windows at the front of the houses, there's driveways, you have, you know, typical carriage lights in the front of the houses, it's not, you know, the house is 50 feet away and there's a six-foot block wall. So I think, I think the nature of that alleyway is, is much different. And honestly, it was something that, you know, got us interested in this project in the very beginning. The original design had rear-loaded garages, which again, is a project that was already entitled. It was something that, you know, state laws aside, we could've, we could've moved forward, you know, as is. But we thought, you know, there was something that could be done to, you know, help the safety of the original entitlement, but also, you know, come up.
Um, and, and those alleys, you know, are only rear-loaded garages and then six-foot block walls. So you're walking in those and you have six-foot walls on both sides of a 20-foot section. So I can see how that, you know, would have safety concerns. Um, the nature of this is it's, it's almost like a, you know, of, of, it is a front yard. You know, there's a, a, a front door. There's windows at the front of the houses. Um, there's driveways. You have, you know, typical carriage lights in the front of the houses. It's not, you know, the house is 50 feet away and there's a six-foot block wall. So I think, I think the nature of that alleyway is, is much different. Um, and honestly, it was something that, you know, got us interested in this project in the very beginning. The original design had rear-loaded garages, which again is a project that was already entitled. It was something that, um, you know, state laws aside, we could've, we could've moved forward, um, you know, as is. But we thought, you know, there was something that could be done to, you know, help the safety of the original entitlement, but also, you know, come up with a new innovative pro- product, um, you know, that takes some of the negative connotations of an alley and turns them into positives.
Well, I'm just, I mean, I'm sure you're concerned about safety of the children and residents. And they're going to go to the alleyway to play. So I would think it'd be appropriate to light it up and not rely on homes to light it up for them.
Okay.
You answer my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, as part of your recommendation, you do have the authority to condition it as such. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We'll now close the public testimony and discuss the matter amongst the commissioners. Uh, the time of closure is 7:50 PM. Any discussion up here at the commissioner level?
I, I have no questions. Just to clarify, this, this project was approved by council before. So our, would it be accurate, and this might be a city attorney question, as far as what our authority is based upon that prior approval in the project and what we can and can't do basically are limitations?
Yes, um, so right now, uh, the planning commission would be making a vote or, you know, discussing a vote um, to essentially recommend either approval or denial of the project to the city council. Um, so the project itself is already entitled. It would incorporate the changes that have been discussed here tonight. Um, and then the final approval would be within the discretion of the city council. So the planning commission here today is just giving a recommendation, um, specifically with regard to conditions of approval.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, well, let's see. All right, we'll call for a motion. Uh, the recommendation for the motion is on the screen. Uh, but I'm sure that there will be, uh, some addendums to that. But who is willing to make a motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, recommend, um, the adoption of the addendum.
To the city council.
To the city council and the resolution, uh, with the provision that, um, staff would impose some kind of lighting requirement on the alleyway, um, to, um, so to the point where staff believes that it's safely lit up. Um, I don't want a Pandora's box here and other projects come in with alleyways and this one's not lit up. Then they're going to say, well, that project's not lit up. We're not going to light ours up. So I, I think it's a good idea. It's prudent. It's safe. We have a safe community. Let's keep it safe. So with that provision, I would, I would make a motion.
Ms. Chairman, could I interject, please? Ms. Chairman? Sorry. So the first motion is just, uh, to recommend the addendum. So I think, I believe Commissioner Wojcik's, uh, uh, re- additional conditions would be appropriate on the second recommendation.
Right. Read the first recommendation and then go to the second recommendation.
I make that motion as amended.
I, I would like to add a second, more clarifying amendment when it comes to the, the same lighting on the actual home structures that I brought up before, including the addressing and the consistency of the streets suffixes. I don't know if that'd be an alternative motion or, to include everything that Commissioner Wojcik and to add those other clarifying lighting, address numbering and street clarification suffixes that would be consistent.
So I, I believe staff wants the, um, two motions and recommendations done separately. Um, so first we have the, uh, mitigated negative declaration. So this is only with regard to the SEQA document, um, for the first motion. Um, and so Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wojcik, um, will, I would recommend at this time withdraw of the first motion and then just for now, consideration of the, um, MND.
Yeah, I would withdraw my motion and my motion now would be just to recommend the adoption of the addendum to the MND.
So that needs a second.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion made by Mr. Commissioner Wojcik and we have a second by Commissioner Veruven. Madam Chair, uh, Madam Secretary, can you give me a roll call vote, please?
Chair Fisher?
Yes?
Vice Chair Harland?
Aye.
Commissioner Veruven?
Aye.
Commissioner Wojcik?
Aye.
Commissioner Lapaglia?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Let's continue to the next public hearing.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, um, yes, we need to have a, um, consideration of the actual resolution, uh, recommending approval of all of the entitlements.
Right.
And so that will incorporate, um, Commissioner Wojcik's recommendation as well as, um, the frontage of the house lighting. Um, so it will be a resolution, um, as stated, and then direction to staff to include additional conditions of approval as articulated by our planning commissioners.
Motion has to be made for that, please.
You want me? Okay, so I, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution of the planning commission to the, uh, city of Mari- Marietta recommending the city council approval of master development plan 2021-2430 along with, um, the, uh, the tentative track maps, um, as part of that development plan. Uh, with the proviso that, um, uh, staff works with the developer to, um, appropriate light, uh, put streetlights in the alleyways, uh, that the addresses, um, uh, would be on both, both sides of the homes, front and back, that are appropriately lit up. And that the street names would be consistent with the, uh, current street names, um, as laid out in the city of Marietta, uh, by using avenue or, or whatever it currently ends with.
I'll second that motion.
Madam Secretary, can you do a roll call vote?
Chair Fisher?
Aye.
Vice Chair Harland?
Aye.
Commissioner Veruven?
Aye.
Commissioner Wojcik?
Aye.
Commissioner Lapaglia?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Now we'll continue to the next public hearing. The next public hearing will be the tentative track map 2022-2515, TTM 38228, Discovery Village 8-Lot Subdivision. Are there any members of the commission that wishes to abstain or recuse themselves on this item? Everybody all right? Seeing none, we'll move on to the staff presentation. Staff, may we have the report?
Thank you, Chair Fisher, Commissioners. My name is Tamara Harrison, Senior Planner with Michael Baker International, presenting as contract staff, uh, excuse me, contract planner for city staff. Um, I will be presenting the Discovery Village Tentative Track Map Project. The project site is located at the southwest corner of the Baxter Road and Whitewood Road intersection in the south of Marietta Fire Station Number Four. The site is currently vacant, um, and previously disturbed. The project is a tentative track map to subdivide 55.8 acres into eight future buil- buildable lots, seven-lettered lots, um, primarily used for roadway rideaway purposes as well as open space, uh, for drainage features. The project also includes roadway improvements to Whitewood, Antelope, Baxter, Running Rabbit and Warm Springs Parkway, as well as infrastructure improvements for sewer, water and storm drainage. The illustration before you shows the proposed layout of the project site. Warm Springs Parkway transacts the project site in a north-south manner. Uh, so lots one through three are west of Warm Springs Parkway and it totals approximately 18 gross acres. And those lot sizes range from four to 10 acres. Uh, these lots would be developed in the future with innovation uses, um, consistent with the city's general plan. Lots four through eight are east of Warm Springs Parkway and it totals approximately 34 acres. Those lots range in size from three to 13 acres and would be developed with multiple family, um, uses consistent with the general plan. Lot F, which will be conserved as open space for the drainage features are located, is located in the northeast portion of the project site. And Lot E, excuse me, the Loma Linda Medical Center is to the north of the project site as well as Marietta Fire Station Number Four. And the new McKenna Medical Center, which is currently under construction, um, is just west as well as north of the project site. Access into the project site would be, uh, via Antelope Road to the west of the site, Baxter to the north, Whitewood Road to the east, Running Rabbit to the south, Warm Springs, and again, Warm Springs Parkway transacts the project site. Uh, the project does include sufficient onsite and offsite roadway and access improvements. And those improvements would be consistent with the city's, uh, general plan circulation element. In terms of traffic circulation, uh, for the purposes of the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, um, a limited vehicle miles traveled analysis was prepared for the project and found that it would be a less than significant impact for SEQA purposes. Um, the project site is also near existing bike lanes, sidewalks and bus routes. And the project will provide for improvements to those features, um, as required by the conditions of approval and city requirements. In terms of infrastructure, the project will grade the subject site, excuse me, oh, yes, grade the subject site as well as provide for water and sewer infrastructure, storm drainage, uh, roads and access. This illustration before you is the draft concept, uh, utility plan. And it shows you preliminary locations of proposed water and sewer, storm drain, um, as well as roadways and access points. Um, infrastructure is going to be a critical point to this project. In terms of cultural and tribal cultural resources, um, in compliance with Assembly Bill 52, the city and the city's archaeologist, who was, uh, the archaeologist was applied earthworks for the applicant's team, worked diligently and confidentially, um, with three tribal governments and worked out a plan that was acceptable to each entity. Um, as such, conditions of approval have been applied to the project accordingly. Similarly, with biological resources, the applicant's biologi- biologist, excuse me, worked with local, state and federal wildlife agencies in order to achieve, uh, consistency with each of the agency's requirements. Again, conditions of approval have been added to the project accordingly as well. The next couple of slides, I'm going to pass it over to city staff, Mr. Jared Ramaya.
Thank you, Tamara. If I could get the next slide. Planning Commission, uh, you've been involved in some recommendations to city council uh, in regards to, in 2020, we made a focused general plan update. We took some of the older office research park zoning, which didn't really attribute to a lot, to the north part of our city. So we took a deep dive, did a lot of workshops, threaded with, uh, property owners in the community. And then also brought a recommendation to you to create a new land use innovation. And then also to feather the outside of it with some multifamily and single family. The goal is to make sure that we have an effective plan for the North County. I'm happy to say that since innovation, we've received the McKenna four-lot split. And as we described in earlier slide, we're seeing a two-office, a two-story medical office building, which actually has a signed, um, traveling nurses school program, uh, in addition to a lot of other facilities, where you just got an application for a hotel on another of those legal lots. So if you can think about what this project in creating legal lots could do, it could probably surmount to what the McKenna is, is one of the hardest things to get is a ready lot. And, and if we can do that, I think we'll, we'll find a lot of folks that want to show up for shovel-ready type of projects. So I wanted to also point out that your commission approved Costco, that's built, very successful, to the south. And, and so in this area of our, of our city, you can see a job infrastructure forming with shopping and walkable areas. You're seeing an expansion of our medical corridor. I think you've seen the, um, ambulatory surgery center for Kaiser go up. And we're really, really proud that the decision-making, the recommendations of the planning commission, the decisions of city council have led to a lot of growth that we didn't see when we had the office research parks. So I just wanted to highlight that although this is a simple eight-lot tentative track map, it will lead to a lot of amazing businesses and residents that will have a very short walkable commute, if you will. And so that's why we're looking at pedestrian-friendly, bicycle-friendly connections with this project. And so I just wanted to go back and say, we've never forgotten about our commitment to the north part of our town. And I think it's these types of projects that can help set up, uh, legal lots where other folks can come in and develop those. Next slide. Again, we've carefully gone over our general plan and development code to make sure that we can make the adequate findings for this project. Typically, you would see a vertical development scheme with these types of projects. This is just a vanilla, uh, TTM. But again, to have legal lots is what I think the general plan has been telling us to do, is find ways to make our, um, north part of our city more robust. Next slide. Just to highlight what we were talking about, this is the map of our old North Marietta Business Corridor. It's part of our golden triangle. Um, it was half effective, you know, we got Loma Linda and Kaiser and all that, but the glue in between is, I think, what we're going to see now. So again, with innovation, um, that is going to really give us some pop. And I'm really proud to say that I think all that hard work with the property owners, planning commission, city council and staff, I think it's really leading to, you know, just in a few short years, it's 2020 is when you approve that. And it's only 2023. So I think this is really good news. And I'm looking at years now that we'll be able to say that we made that original North Mari business corridor very successful. And, uh, I'll hand this back to you, Tamara.
Thank you, Jared. The environmental analysis completed for the project determined that the project is exempt from SEQA per SEQA Guidelines 1518 and Public Resources Code Section 21083.3. And although the project does qualify for an exemption, the project does include a significant number of technical studies that were completed, um, which analyze study areas such as air quality and noise, um, among the other technical areas you see on the screen there. Um, please note that the de- determination of biologically equivalent or superior preservation, also known as the DBESP, uh, was updated from what was originally posted on the site. Um, and city staff also received a letter from Riverside County Flood Control regarding the project. And so the project has been conditioned appropriately for compliance with that. And they will also work with engineering staff, um, to achieve floods comments. Um, an errata for the project has been prepared for changes to conditions of approval, the resolution and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. And the commission should have a copy of that. And so with that, staff recommends that the planning commission consider and approve the notice of exemption per SEQA Guideline Section 15183 and Section 21083.3 of the Public Resources Code and adopt the resolution of the planning commission of the city of Marietta approving tentative track map number 2022-2515 for the subdivision of 55.8 gross acres into eight numbered lots and seven-lettered lots for onsite roadway and open space purposes and associated offsite improvements located south, at the southwest intersection of Baxter Road and Whitewood Road, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval. This concludes my presentation and staff is available for questions.
And just a quick note, I have two more minor-minded changes to the errata. There's some acreage discrepancies that we can, uh, read into the record a little bit later. But thank you again, Tamara, for, uh, presenting the next project.
At this time, we'll take comments, uh, from the commissioners to the staff if there are any comments. And we'll start with this, with Commissioner Wojcik.
Thank you, Tamara, for that, uh, presentation. Um, the, is, I assume the developer's going to be speaking later?
They're in attendance. They're in attendance.
Okay, I had one or two questions, um, for them. I like this overall, but let me tell you, something that really stuck out to me is the number of trips per day that was prepared by Urban Crossroads. They had originally, it looked like, um, seventy-one hundred two-way trips per day. And then I think they did a supplement where it was reduced to fifty-two hundred trips per day. So my, and my recollection was that maybe one of the buildings, the, the use changed or something, but, um, can you refresh my memory why it dropped two thousand trips per day?
We're gonna, uh, chairman, uh, our commissioner, we're gonna ask, uh, Brian Stevenson, our traffic engineer, to come up and help us with that.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm gonna flip through this, um, trip generation letter that was submitted as, as part of this. I'm not recollecting off the top of my head why the difference, uh, for the supplemental. They did have, they did do the full traffic study that had roughly five hundred peak hour trips in the morning, five hundred peak hour trips in the evening. And then, as you said, the seven, roughly seven thousand ADT. Does the applicant know what, why the difference was? I don't recall.
Uh, excuse me, the protocol for the commission is to come up to the dais or the speaker here.
If you would introduce yourself and come to the dais when asked a question, please. Your name?
Uh, my name is Connor Pakwin. I am with Urban Crossroads, uh, one of the traffic consultants for the applicant. Um, so I helped work on this supplemental letter where we looked at some different uses if they were compared to the traffic study that was prepared. Um, and that came up with a reduction in trips for those other uses that were evaluated. So basically, um, if we were to look at these other uses, since it's a reduction in trips, there wouldn't be any additional, I guess deficiencies compared to what was analyzed within the traffic study.
I'm a simple man. I don't understand your answer.
Okay.
Went from seventy-two hundred or seventy-one hundred to fifty-two hundred. Why?
We need somebody else to answer that question. Can you identify yourself?
Yes, I'm Tina Anderson with TMB, uh, sorry, TMB Planning. We prepared the, um, exemption, the initial study for the exemption, working with Connor and the other technical teams. So just, um, Jared, you can provide the background on the innovation use, but as you know, that allows many different types of uses within that zone. So what we wanted to do is to ensure that we analyzed, um, I don't want to use the termination, the worst case. So we looked at not only what the traffic would be with a business park type use, but what would the trips be with something like a light manufacturing type use? So it's because of those two types of uses where we came up with different trip generation. For each topic, we looked at what the worst case situation would be based on those trip generation. So it's not saying the project would generate it. It's an envelope of trips that could be generated by the innovation uses.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Commissioner, just to maybe provide some backdrop, I think she'd referred innovation. So when we did the focus general plan update to create innovation, our traffic study was comprehensive in that area. So with this document, they wanted to double down that we had a worst case scenario, as Tina had explained. Hopefully that, that kind of gives you some backdrop that, I believe we've analyzed it properly from the twenty twenty EIR that the city certified. This one five one eight three includes additional information to make sure that it's still consistent with the zoning and general plan, uh, in the area.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, so then, uh, the, really the, again, this traffic thing kind of gives me some heartburn because seventy-one hundred trips per day is a lot, fifty-two hundred's certainly a lot still. And when I look at these roads, um, you know, you have Whitewood. I mean, eventually for these people to get to the freeway, they're either going to access the freeway through Clinton Keith. And I guess is Baxter going to eventually tie into the freeway?
That'll be, there'll be a Keller Road interchange eventually.
Keller. And, and so, um, I'm not a traffic guy, but it just seems like I go down Clinton Keith now and it's a mess, especially when high school's in session. So we're going to add roughly fifty-two hundred, but I'll be at, once Keller is open, I guess some of the residents and some of the business people there will, will go use that, but, um, and I don't know much about that intersection, if it's going to accommodate it. I, so did staff look into this stuff? And how are they going to get to the freeway and how are we going to avoid? It's already congested on Clinton Keith, so how are we going to maintain that level of congestion and not make it worse?
So the, the applicant's team prepared a pretty thorough traffic study through consultation with city staff. They analyzed a number of intersections, north of the project, east of the project, to south of the project. So Clinton Keith Road, Whitewood Road, uh, up towards Keller to determine, um, the impact of their project trips at each of these intersections. So down the middle of their, of their project site is a planned four-lane major roadway, which is going to be Warm Springs Parkway, which would someday tie into where Costco, it, it ends at Costco. So there's a four-lane major roadway, which is Whitewood, north-south road, a four-lane major roadway through the center of the site, which is Warm Springs Parkway, which will eventually get you up to, um, the Scott interchange. So a portion of the trap, traffic was assumed to use Scott interchange if they're headed north. And then if they're headed south towards like, say, San Diego, they would, um, it makes sense to go to the south to go to the Clinton Keith interchange. But the traffic site did analyze a number of intersections. We have criteria in the general plan that says you need to meet a certain level of service, A, B, C, D, E, F. If you don't, um, meet level of service D or better, then you have to show how you're going to improve the intersection to get to that acceptable level of service. So there's a number of improvements that are identified in the project conditions of approval that, that we're recommending that you adopt to get these intersections to an acceptable, um, level of service. There, there's also some fair share contributions that they're making to, um, other agencies as well to mitigate potential traffic impacts in other agencies.
So depending on the time of day, when I'm going on Clinton Keith, it's, it's congested around that Costco area. And we're going to add in, um, Warm Springs Parkway that will dump into Clinton Keith. That's accurate, right?
Yes.
So what are we doing on Clinton Keith to create a condition where it's not going to become more congested than it already is? Or is it going to be more congested? Is that the answer?
Well, the
I think that's the answer, but I want to hear from staff.
The, the project's able to get the intersections along that road to the acceptable level of service that this, that the city has. From a city standpoint, we've recently, um, changed timing along Clinton Keith, coordinated eleven signals together. We've been told by the police department that monitor, that staffs those schools there that the traffic flows better now. We, we did this after Costco opened. We wanted to make sure we got traffic flowing as best we could there. We also have a grant that we're, um, we received to install adaptive timing along, or at each of the city's intersections, all hundred and five, uh, traffic signals. So we will be installing in the next couple of years new equipment on each of these signals along Clinton Keith and everywhere else to better progress traffic through the intersections. There'll be smarter intersections. So from a city standpoint, that's what we're doing, but from the, uh, applicant and this project standpoint, they, they've identified a number of mitigation measures to add turn lanes at certain intersections throughout this study area.
Uh, we're not adding lanes on Clinton Keith, are we? It's going to remain the same number?
That's correct. Uh, at the intersection of Whitewood and Clinton Keith, the project's getting conditioned to install the, um, dual lefts northbound. So that it's, right now on the, on the southeast corner of the intersection, it's not wide enough to have the dual lefts north, um, north to west to get to the freeway. So this project showed that they had a project impact at that intersection, so they're getting conditioned to install that improvement. So no more through lanes on Clinton Keith, but at intersections, there will be improvements.
Okay. I don't know how you're going to pull it off. Um, okay. The only, only other question I had was, uh, according to this, um, report, we're going to have, there's going to be, um, multi-family housing, but I just, I think a hundred and ninety-nine units, but I want to just confirm, those are condominiums. It's not apartments. Is that accurate?
The project that's before you tonight is just a tentative track map. No multifamily, no innovation is being proposed tonight.
Okay.
There's a set density that the applicant will later separately have to file a permits for, but yeah. I, I think part of this analysis though is to make sure that when we do get those future projects, there's not no, not a new hiccup. It's nice to have this analysis, uh, upfront so that later on, those permits, uh, would be more ministerial, if you will.
Right. I, I posed a question only because based on what's being proposed, I see the number of trips. And so I'm wondering, could this, could it even get worse than as it's presently constituted?
I believe these are worst case scenario.
Okay.
Um, but that's, it's traffic modeling, so, you know, we have to appreciate that. We're trying to forecast the future here.
Right.
But I think with our growth levels, we've, well, thank God we have working sharing, but I, I think we've gotten it right, uh, so far.
Yeah, I just, I see French Valley just, especially once Clinton Keith opens all the way to Winchester Road. It's just going to get used more. And we're adding this to it.
And I apologize, Winchester Road, we share with the county in Temecula. There's been a lot of history with that. Uh, we believe the county, I think there was a lawsuit and a settlement agreement where a lot of that traffic volume was from other jurisdictions other than ours. And Caltrans has, um, I think we're at a fail at some of those intersections and that's solely due to Caltrans in other cities. And, and hopefully with the new infrastructure that's coming with the French Valley interchange, hopefully we'll see some minor relief from that.
Yeah, I, I only point that out because it's, um, you know, that area is still growing, so our traffic from French Valley going through there to get to the two fifteen, I think it's going to get worse over the next ten, fifteen years. And again, I, like I said, I like this project, but you know, people already ticked because it's just congested there and we're just adding to it. So, and I, I, I don't have an easy solution here, but it just, uh, I just see that impact and, and I, it's going to be, I think, a disaster. Man, I sound really negative tonight, but yeah. So I know. So anyway, um, those are my thoughts.
Another commissioners, any questions for the staff?
Uh, yes, just one, uh, but first off, Tamara, uh, very good job in presenting. I think this is the first time I've seen you present. Um, so good job on, on that tonight.
Thank you.
And then, uh, for Mr. Stevenson, uh, I'm going to try and take you back maybe about fifteen years and, um, I, and where I'm going with this is Antelope Road. And I remember, you know, about that timeframe, the council at the time, and this is kind of conceptually, you know, what is now the Costco property, the Lanell Bridge that went over the freeway. And there was talk about complete, uh, vac- completely vacating the Antelope roadside, but yet there were still properties that had to access. And I see this project, uh, particularly lot one, that's the ingress and egress. So maybe if you could kind of describe, what, what is the overall uh, traffic plan on the west side as it, uh, abuts the freeway there, north-south on Antelope? Um, are we going to see it widen, uh, at some point in time? Will it continue underneath the Lanell Bridge and continue to, um, you know, cul-de-sac right there? What is the overall, uh, circulation plan for Antelope?
So the, that's a good question because originally Antelope Road was more of a major type roadway. And through general plan updates over the years, it's gotten, it, it's been downgraded to an industrial collector. So that's a narrower road. It's, it's, uh, one lane in each direction with a center turning lane because there's still properties that will front Antelope Road and need access. So, um, this project will have a driveway on Antelope Road. And at that driveway, they will be installing a separate southbound left turn lane into the project. And there'll be a through lane in each direction and then, uh, a wider shoulder on, on both sides. Going to the, um, north towards Keller, Antelope Road will jog because when the Keller interchange goes in, as it's currently planned, those two ramps are going to be roundabouts. And the roundabouts push, uh, will, will sever Antelope, so Antelope will have to kind of, um, jog to the east, then to the north to get up to Keller. Did that answer your question?
It, it does. I, I think, yeah, from what I recall years ago, the, the, you know, wishful thinking probably that all those properties, uh, including this one and the ones, uh, to the south would, would all somewhat develop maybe around the same time and then they would eliminate, you know, uh, Antelope Road, and so everything would be, you know, pushed for access, main access to Warm Springs, uh, road. But that's obviously not going to happen based upon this kind of piecemeal, uh, development right there. So as it goes to the south of this, of this property, what we see today, is that the way it's always going to be? And this has to go with kind of the, again, another route would be, you know, the, you know, north of Lanell, get back to Lanell, go over the bridge to McElwain. You know, that's another access point in order to get to this, particularly lot one.
Yeah, I don't believe there's any planned changes to Antelope, um, to the south of here. Yeah, that's kind of like the back way to get into Costco.
Correct.
So, um, I'm not aware of any changes.
Okay, just for clarification. And do we have any concept or idea? I know we, uh, lots four through eight were, um, so any, any particular project per se or on particularly lot one?
No, you know, under SEQA, we consider the whole of the action. So if we had such a project, we'd have to express that today. This is just a creation of eight lots. We assume that once those are recorded though and ready for build, that we will see, uh, quite a volume of folks coming in to build upon that. But we have not seen, uh, any specific layouts of anything, but I can only imagine how the McKenna project is building, something similar to that.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
I have no questions for staff. Thank you.
I'll concur with my colleagues. Tamara, nice job.
Thank you very much.
And Jared, I share with your excitement, your enthusiasm and excitement. I mean, to see that northern end start growing like that, that's how exciting, right? Kind of teamwork making the dream work. That's, that's really cool to see. The, um, having a hotel, I think is exciting. Traditionally now, any out of town visitors I get, um, when this gets built, I can keep, uh, keep him off of Jefferson and, uh, and Temecula and keep him in Marietta. Like, that's fantastic. Um, I'm seeing roadway improvements, Whitewood, Antelope, Baxter, Running Rabbit Road, Warm Spring Parkway, sewer, water, drainage feature, uh, updates. Um, well done. And I, I think setting this up is exciting. The, um, the Costco center, you know, hopefully every business in there has an idea when this runs through kind of what you guys are doing because I think it's a game changer for all those businesses with future planning and what that's going to do to, to boost them and perhaps bring in additional, um, businesses that we're looking for. Expect to build out, I think, next year?
Not sure with the applicant's timeframe, but, um, but to that point, Commissioner, uh, we did take a tour a couple of months ago, the Kaiser's Ambulatory Surgery Center. We got to meet quite a lot of high-end professionals, you know, surgery techs, surgeons, nurses. I think the one theme I heard from all those folks that were from other parts of the state was how magical of a town. We never even knew where this was, but now that we're here, we'd love to buy a house here and raise our families here. It was nice to hear because those are a classification of professionals you don't always get to rub elbows with. But I think a lot of folks in this city have worked really hard to support the medical and that has created these offshoots. So yeah, I'm really proud to hear from people that aren't even residents, how magical Marietta is. And, and I hear, uh, a commissioner about traffic and all that, but we're, we're going to be hitting our growth levels, uh, soon. And we should expect it might take a little bit longer, but I think I sit with a lot of professionals here that want to make sure that this is a safe, growing city. We can't stop the growth, but, um, but I'm really admiring the people that want to join this city as residents and business folks.
Well done.
Any other comments from any of the other commissioners to the staff? Jared, I just have, or, excuse me. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Tamara.
Cameron.
Tamara.
Camera.
Yes.
I don't think I've met you before, but you did a great job in your presentation. I appreciate it very much. I have a question. And I guess because of my background and the things that I've been through on the planning commission, this is my second time around. With the cultural and tribal cultural resources, uh, in a vacant area as this is, there will be a lot of digging and there will be a lot of speculation by the tribes that there may be burial. speculation by the tribes that there may be burial things there. You have stated that you've had a lot of meetings with them and that you have come to agreement. Can you clarify that just a little bit better?
Yeah, Chairman, in our audience is Joan George, she works for Applied Earthworks and I'll have to give her ninety-nine percent of the credit. What we're talking about is, we had to begin under state law AB fifty-two, a consultation process. This is in an area where multiple tribes wanted to know if their history was relevant. Through very careful discourse and interviews, Joan George was able to have very close confidential discussions, which ultimately led to each of the tribes um agreeing to disconclude AB fifty-two, meaning that we have mitigation measures in place that will assure that during grading operations, if there are fines, we have an inadvertent fines protocol. We also have the tribal monitors uh from those governments and so really proud to say that there was a deep dive done by the applicant's professional and I'm really amazed at how um careful and adroit that professional was, but I won't take any credit because I think I just sent out the AB fifty-two letters. And it was very nice in a confidential manner to see all three tribes in unison that we as staff and our professionals that we work with did the right thing under state law and that led to a successful outcome, but yeah, that is, that's a delicate consultation process and we had the right professional on the bus to get us to the finish line.
Well, that's good, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Uh and I know that all projects, you all in the planning department really thoroughly investigate all of the what-ifs. Uh and all of this is projection. I mean, from a traffic standpoint, I can appreciate that, but I won't know until it's actually built what the traffic's gonna be like and then we're gonna have to make an adjustment based upon what that develops, just like we did with the Costco issue. Everybody wanted to say that that's gonna bring traffic and and we had a lot of resident problems and things of that sort and they anticipate the worst. And I think you've applied that into your planning abilities and therefore I have confidence that that will be adjusted, should it be worst-case scenario, worse than what we planned for. Uh once it's built and once it's adj- uh we adjust it to that, so I thank you for that. Seeing that there are no other commissioners' comments to the staff, it's time for the applicant to give his presentation. And the applicant will have fifteen minutes for his presentation and a ten-minute rebuttal if necessary. If you could introduce yourself and welcome.
I'd missed, but there it is, alright, I normally, everybody can hear me pretty well without it, but Chairman Fisher and uh Murrieta, uh I was gonna say say the council, sorry, Planning Commission, thank you guys so much for uh for hearing this tonight. Uh always respect your time, wanna thank staff, Tamara as well, new onboard here, uh did a fan- fantastic job uh for Michael Baker for our project, helped to try to streamline things. My my name is Derek Hicks, I'm with Argent Management, I'm representing Discovery Village LLC, who's the owner of the property and the applicant. Um I will keep this super, super short and sweet, um but I would like to address, I I do have some of my uh consultants here, uh do you have some that are remote that we're not able to make it tonight, so um if there are any questions with anything that does come up, uh we're more than happy to answer that for you. Uh but I I would like to touch on the traffic real quick, I I would like to elaborate a bit more on that. Um the study that you were looking at, we we did want to, for the project, we wanted to lay a good groundwork for us to be able to start with. Um and a lot of that hard part is just, you know, looking at traffic and, you know, the impacts and you know, cultural resources and all those type of things, but we wanted to really take care of that before we start getting in to the process with staff going through the pre-application for site plans and, you know, the the actual products and those type of things, so. Regarding the traffic, the residential area is its zone at fifteen point one to eighteen D use per acre. Um and we, what we did is we looked at the worst case, eighteen D use per acre. I will tell you, most likely we probably won't get there, we're in a absolute preliminary process right now regarding product, layout, site, all that, but I will tell you that that was why, you know, that's why we wanted to look at, you know, the eighteen D use per acre to make sure we were looking at a worst case from the residential standpoint. Um as Tina had made mention too, um we, on the innovation side, we wanted to look at a couple different uses there to give some, you know, some some latitude in the future, but also again, trying to look at kind of the worst case, the innovation is so broad, I mean, there's, I I forget how many different uses, but there is so many uses within the innovation designation. Super exciting for you guys, super exciting, I know Jared's excited about it, so. Um as we are as well, um and we tried to look at that from a worst-case scenario as well, from the traffic standpoint and and actually from from other aspects as well, noise, air, all the different uh studies that we had performed. So with that, I will uh open it up to any questions you guys may have for me, um or any of my consultants to help elaborate.
Uh thank you very much, are there any questions for the applicant?
I just have, real quick.
Sure.
Is it your intent, are you developing the project, are you gonna be flipping some of these uh parcels?
Yeah, it's it's our current business plan that we will be developing, grading out the superpads um and working with merchant builders on the residential and also working with potential builders um for the innovation as well.
And have you done a project like this before and where at?
We have a project that I'm not currently working on, but up in the Bay Area, um where we did some superpads and worked with the builders through the planning process and you know, one of the things that, you know, we did talk to staff about was that, you know, we'd like to kind of be there to make sure that things get done, get done right. You know, the the company that I do work for, we always take pride in in those uh developments that we have done and continue to do. You know, we tried to make sure that we're being cognizant of, you know, environmental and and all that stuff as as well. So, yeah.
Uh other than the Bay Area, has Discovery Village done any other projects?
Uh Discovery Village LLC is a one-off, um it's a, it's an independent LLC. But the company I work for, Argent Management, uh we do manage um with numerous LLCs throughout uh throughout the state and throughout the country.
Okay. Alright, that's it, thank you.
Alright, you bet. Hopefully answered your question, bring you, you know, bring you a little more happiness about us, maybe not hitting that eighteen D use per acre, so.
No, n- no angst against you guys, it's just the whole traffic number just kind of blows me away.
Well, I'll tell you, Brian has done a fantastic job as well. Um and again, staff, you know, Bob, working with us on, you know, they they have pressed us. Um and I think that, you know, we've we've been able to uh work out what's gonna be best for the city and uh for the project.
Thank you very much for your comments, appreciate it.
Great, thank you guys, I appreciate it.
After uh public comments, if you wanna have a ten-minute rebuttal, you can have that. Uh next, we're gonna move to the public test, uh public testimony. Uh we're gonna open up the public testimony at eight thirty-six PM. And Madam Secretary, do we have any public comments, starting with proponents, opponents, and then those that may be neutral in that order?
Thank you Chair, we do not have any public comments.
No public comments at this time. If you would come up to the podium and ask a question and identify yourself?
We we may need a speaker slip to codify that.
Uh you may have to fill out a s-
Yeah, afterward, we can do that afterwards.
It's just really basic, I'm Teresa Blifus, I'm a resident. I actually happen to work at Encompass Health, which is on Whitewood and I just happened to be here for the previous one. My question is, is are they, is there any plans to enlarge the fire department, the fire station that's right there?
Uh I don't, we're not able to comment on the public comments, you can make your comments and then the city-
That would be my only-
Then you can ask the city, the city possibly would have an answer for you on that.
Alright, because there's a lot of development for that little tiny, that's my only comment.
Thank you very much for your comment.
And just to provide some cover, this is just an eight-lot tentative track map, no vertical construction, no residence, no businesses, so we'll we'll deal with that later on when we get that with fee structure.
Okay. I'm gonna close the public testimony at this time, seeing that there are no other public comments and that time would be at eight thirty-nine PM. I'm gonna bring the matter back up here to the commissioners and uh understand a consensus or debate any issues? Commissioners? You're good? You're good? Alright, so now it's time to, oh, I wanna ask a question. When we call for a motion, and you've got your recommendations here, which is actually the motion, is it, and I guess this is a legal question, is it necessary to read this into the public as it is stated here and then have any additions or deletions from it? Or can it just be, I I make the motion to recommend?
Um so for resolutions, it is not required that you read the entire title of the um resolution. It's always recommended, um not required, for ordinances, the reading of the title is required.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Uh Chairman, uh before uh anything goes further, I wanted to bring up a point with the errata I had submitted for this project.
That was, that was my next question.
Yeah, number three has to do with biological mitigation. Very recently, the applicant's biologist threaded with the agencies, who made a determination that we could make some slight changes. I may have inadvertently made an error. Uh so where I see the dot point, well, under number three, the first page, COE seventeen, the dot point currently struck out point zero zero two and the same thing in the the second dot point, so I would just recommend that we convert back to the point two nine two and and I'll be confirming that with the agencies uh next week, but I just wanted to make sure that for today, um I wanna make sure that we had accurate numbers before, you know, I apologize for that, um that slight error there.
When we make this motion, and I guess another legal point, on the conditions of approval, this errata, can it just be added to the motion?
Yes, so it would just be um approval of the resolution with direction to staff to include the errata language in the actual um conditions of approval in the resolution.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that. Uh now time to call for a motion. Anybody wanna make the motion, please?
Alright, I'd like to make a motion to approve the notice of exemption for projects consistent with community plan or zoning pursuant to the guidelines for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, section one five one eight three of title fourteen, division six, chapter three of the California Code of Regulations and Public Resources Code, section two one oh eight three dot three, and adopt the resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Murrieta approving tentative track map number two oh two two dash two five one five, TTM three eight two two eight, for the subdivision of fifty-five point eight gross acres into the eight numbered lots, seven-lettered lots for onsite roadway and open space purposes and associated off-site improvements located southwest of the intersection of Baxter Road and Whitewood Road, APN three nine two dash two nine zero dash zero four nine, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit A, as found in Attachment A, as well as with staff working on the errata language uh in the resolution.
Thank you Vice Chair Harland, second?
I will second.
Thank you. That was seconded by uh Commissioner La Paguila. Madam Secretary, can we call for, roll call vote for vote on this?
Chair Fisher?
Aye.
Vice Chair Harland?
Aye.
Commissioner Bruman?
Aye.
Commissioner Boychek?
Aye.
Commissioner La Paguila?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously?
Thank you very much, Madam Secretary.
Commission, this, so this item is a uh final decision unless appealed uh within ten days.
Okay, thank you. It is now approaching uh our nine o'clock uh hour. Uh do we have time to do uh the next public hearing item of electrical vehi- vehicle charging and housing element?
You you know, the Planning Commission rules of procedure say that at ten o'clock, the commission can vote whether to continue. I do, let's see how far we can get, because I know everyone's had a long day and um I'm sitting next to Taylor Grable. Uh Chris Tracy will join us, um this is actually a pretty cool thing, but uh let's see how far we can get tonight. And and again, I think we're all tired, so I appreciate that comment.
Alright, alright, we'll continue on to the next public hearing, uh which is Electrical Vehicle Charging and Housing Element Implementation Ordinance MCA twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 one. Uh are there any members of the Planning Commission that wish to abstain or recuse themselves from this item? Seeing none, we'll move on to the staff presentation. May we have a staff report, please?
Hello, thank you, my name's Taylor Grable, I'm the Associate Planner with the City of Murrieta and here to discuss today uh a proposed implementation ordinance for electronic vehicles and uh our housing element. So here's the agenda, we'll provide a little bit of background and then kind of just discuss specifically about the EV parking changes, the housing element uh implementation and then y'all just got a memo, I think, and maybe you're reading that, but we'll uh discuss that in a little bit of detail too. So background, the Climate Action Plan and the housing element are both parts of our general plan. So those were both items that were reviewed by the Planning Commission and uh then adopted by City Council, so it was pretty exciting, earlier this month, we had our six-cycle housing element adopted and that's important because it helps protect us from things like builders remedies, so it's really great that we got that adopted. So first thing, the EV parking requirements. The proposed changes are essentially there to implement a climate action plan policy and to have us aligned with the green building standards and those proposed amendments or additions will look at the definitions, standards and requirements. So the definitions are addressing those four topics. I learned a little bit about what EV capable means and that means that there's like the infrastructure there for connecting kind of like that box. But it could be hard, you had to have special electrical like infrastructure and that's basically providing the infrastructure, but the charging isn't there yet and then the level two is a measure of how like quickly a charge, a car could charge. Then when we're looking at our standards, um it's part of like our site plan analysis, we'll be adopting signage and pavement marking standards uh that you'll see coming forward to some of the site plants you'll be looking at. And then we're doing a little bit of an update to um our standards that will discuss the number of charging spaces, charging uh stations that will be required. And again, this is based off of like the total number of parking spaces that they have to provide as part of like parking tabulation, this will be part of it, so it's not really adding, you know, new parking, but it's just reconfiguring uh the parking that's required. And now next to our housing element, so really this is there to implement policy action one dash nine and a lot of these updates came from HCD requesting maybe, but uh requiring us to make certain updates to our code to comply with like state laws or to reduce what they felt were government constraints on the development of housing. So I'll run through it quickly. Minimum lot size, right now for our multifamily zoning designations, there's a minimum acreage of five and we worked with a consultant actually. and we did an analysis of basically all the other communities in Riverside County. And we had the largest standards at five. And then we had internal discussions with staff, thinking about the context of our city. And we thought that one acre would be good to continue with. And that's still like at, that's still at the higher end compared to the rest of the communities in our county. Reasonable accommodation, something pretty specific about subjective language there. Manufactured homes. This is basically updating the, some of the wording. And then the manufactured homes weren't permitted in one residential zone. So it's adding it to be allowed in that zone. And they still have to comply with building requirements, so it'll be safe for folks. But yeah, just updating it a little bit there. Parking requirements. HCD had a concern about we require enclosed parking as part of multifamily developments and condominiums. So they wanted to see that removed. And I think that could help remove some of the costs for projects. And I know, yeah, we've kind of had that as a point of concern with some developments. Conditional use permit findings, we'll be discussing this in a little bit more detail. And then emergency shelter parking. The state has requirements that you just can't require more parking for emergency shelter than other residential or commercial uses in the zone. So we just kind of modified the code to bring it into, to align it with those standards. Okay. So you all were just provided a memo. And really, this is discussing the point of conditional use permit findings. So the, how HCD had basically concerns that some residential uses were being looked at through a conditional use permitting process. And they didn't want, they were concerned about subjectivity in that language. So we provided you some draft code that looked at striking generally from conditional use permit findings at a certain language. So we're kind of talked it over recently. And a concern would be that, well, maybe that's great for housing projects, but for non-residential projects, it could still be nice for us to have that tool in our tool belt. So we're hoping... Oh, this slide didn't get quite updated in time. But yeah, so we were hoping that you all make the recommendation to strike that specific proposal for us to discuss at a future hearing. Okay. So here's a lot of text for, for recommendation. And you'll see down at number four, we talk about striking the conditional use permits findings specifically. So that's a recommendation that we're making when we say read into the record, the modifications as presented within the memorandum. But maybe that language could be massaged a little bit. Okay. With all that being said, do you have any questions about the proposed ordinance?
I'll bring it up, back up to the commissioners. Are any questions? Any questions of staff? Commissioner Verman?
So a couple of elements I would want a little bit more clarification on, two of them specifically, the minimum lot size change. Seems like a big swag from five acres to one. So if I understand it correctly, right now, if somebody had a one-acre parcel, or if I, you know, let's say, one-acre parcel, they could basically decide to put an apartment complex on that one acre, where right now, we would say, no, you can't do that, because you're, you know, five acres is minimum. Am I understanding that correctly?
It's a little different than that. So it could be kind of confusing. This would be more about... If... Okay. So this would be more that if you wanted to divide a property that was multifamily before, it had to be more than five acres for you to be able to divide it. But let's say that you had a pre-existing not, legal non-conforming lot that was maybe two acres. You could still develop multifamily on that project. This is really, we're looking at like, if someone wanted to divide a multifamily site, like through a subdivision or, or something, this would provide people the tool to be able to do so. And so maybe that might allow for different housing types. It's hard to, hard to say, but...
Just to add on to that, Commissioner, I think this is one of the poignant issues for housing and community development, is that we have policies that aren't aligned with getting more vertical construction. I can see it another way, smaller. Developers that have five acres and more have to put in hundreds of units. They're going three, four-story. And we're getting like six, 800 units. If they're smaller, we'll probably have nicer, more boutique products on each of those larger lots. But I have to go back to, this is the direction. In order for our housing element to ultimately get adopted by the state, we have to scrutinize over some of these policies that we've had in our books for a while and do the state's requirements. These are the things that we need to come back to them with that we've changed. And so I apologize, this is more the state putting its long arm down our throat. But at the same time, I think we can work with this model, meaning with the objective guidelines that you all had recommended to City Council. This could be nicer multifamily projects in a smaller setting. But I think that's the backdrop. We're kind of in a tangled web with HCD saying, if you don't do this, you won't get your housing element certified.
So with the other cities that you cited, all the other cities, did they change, did they change theirs recently? Or they just happened to be at one acre and we, we've been at five acres? And if we don't, do we know the history as to why we were at five acres before?
It's a little unique. I think that's something more closer to our jurisdiction. But I would say that we did not get a significant amount of requests from HCD, unlike other cities. Other cities had to rezone and do other types of things. But I think that was something obvious to the HCD, was, hey, why do you have this five-acre minimum? Justify that. And I think they caught something that was a little more subjective in our code. And that was the angle of approach they took, from my understanding.
So by this change, I guess the, the big, the big question for probably most of us, I would imagine, because we hear it all the time, right, with all the different projects. So by this change, is it going to allow more multifamily or less?
The way I look at it, the same, because you still have, this is just about acreage, but you still have a density that we're, we're affixated on our current general plan and development codes. I don't, it might, well, I don't, smaller project sites get eaten away by setbacks and road infrastructure. It may lead to a little bit more difficulty to get to the densities. But I wouldn't say that this would lead to more product types. You still, as an applicant, have to, have to prove that you're coming within the density allowed in your zone.
Commissioner, I think, yeah, you would add that, I think in the state's eyes, is it eliminates that constraint where there, there's potentially more developers that are available to come out and build instead of that one big five-acre project. Now you have, you know, a smaller site where there is more opportunity for other developers to go and try and handle a project of that size.
I'm just suspicious of anything that the state wants is probably not a great idea for us. And so, I mean, if we have flexibility, but I'll let everybody else chime in on this. The only other question I had with the parking in the multifamily, just seemingly, are we losing ground by, by not requiring the garage unit? You know, and that's, it goes back to the kind of the public safety. Things are locked up is something, you know, to me is, it hardens the target for any type of car break-ins, things like that. So that's an advantage to have, but by taking it out, we kind of give, give ground in that area.
I think one advantage with having it open is it's actually being used for parking versus storage. And then you have off-street parking issues from there. So the parking spaces will be utilized more for the residents as the intended use in that type of setup. And that's, and also the cost factor, I believe, you know, was another consideration with that update.
Cost factor to the developer?
Yeah, to the applicant to build that garage fully and, you know, do the drywall insulation and all that stuff. So...
And some backdrop, you may recall SB 330, right? That was by Senator Skinner. Senator Skinner spent a lot of time with developers and planning departments. And he was getting feedback on what could help get more vertical housing. And a lot of them were like, hey, don't raise fees, don't change conditions. I think one of them was the cost of production, you know, and state, the states, you know, cost a lot to build a house. But I think the legislature was looking for a balance in listening to the developing community by saying, hey, if you didn't have to build so many garages, could you put that effort into the construction? And I think that's the backdrop. I think the legislature was listening to different audiences. And I think that's why we're seeing those types of requirements coming through HCD.
Again, the state, the state, I'm suspicious of what the state wants. And so, I don't know, I just, I kind of see that as, I still see it as losing ground. I understand that people use their garages for storage, and that's, that, that becomes the practical side of it. And, but I'm less concerned personally on construction costs and things like that. That's, you know, it's maybe the cost of doing business, but that's just my personal feeling.
Just to add some comfort, some developers will not go to the carport or open area. They have a product type where they know that the families want a garage with a garage door that comes down. So you won't see developers walking away from this, because there's a number of folks that have to sell a certain feature to families. And families do love garages, you know? So I think that you're going to see a blending of activity. The market rate, folks, probably most of them or half of them will go for the garage. The other folks, of course, will go this direction.
If they can cut costs, then they'll go on the cheap, right? I mean, it's just human nature. Okay.
I don't have any questions for staff on this. I need to, I need to digest it a little bit more, but go ahead.
Your turn? Go ahead. You have a question?
Sure, just a couple of things. So the parking requirements, right? So I know in my daughter's condo that we recently purchased, right? So if you had a covered garage, you know, there's a premium to pay for it, you know, which we certainly glad, gladly did. I know she was in an apartment that didn't have that option. I don't, I just think that's one that we might want to challenge, especially when you look at the area here, right, between the heat? You know, you've got the theft. You know, if you don't have it, you know, you've got people parking out on the street. You've got, you know, the, the storage thing. I think it's, right, a builder can build for less without one, right? But then with the city expenses with either fire or police or break-ins, et cetera, it costs us on the other side. To me, I, again, I, I could see, I could see leaving this one. Other question I had on that minimum lot size, you know, five acres to one, you know, do we, that's a big drop, you know? Is, is five to three something perhaps to think about? Maybe it's something in the middle? But I hear you, Jared, with what you're saying. The manufactured homes? Permit manufacturing and mobile homes by right in all residential zones? What, what exactly does that, are we saying that we can put a manufactured housing or mobile home in the middle of a, in the middle of a, you know, a standard neighborhood? I guess just looking for some clarity on that one. I just didn't quite understand that one.
As I understand, Taylor, the state law acknowledges that a manufactured home, which is built on a permanent foundation, is the equivalent of a single-family residence. That's, I think that's existing state law. And I, I think as a city, you got to be careful that you're also dealing with a population that may not have the same resources. And, you know, most cities have, we used to call them a different term. But, and as we looked at this, and I think this is one of the first things that HCD put down on the mat a couple of years ago, was like, cities, stop, you know, denying folks from replacing their manufactured homes. And I think that was a big deal. So you see a lot of number of folks who are seniors that live in that. They don't have much budget. And for those folks, I do find common ground that when someone's in a manufactured home and all they can do is replace it from a cost factor. I think that speaks to fair housing. And I think that's what some cities might not have gotten that right. I think we've always supported those folks here in our town. But I think across the board in the state, I think HCD want to make sure that all the cities were honoring manufactured homes as an equivalency of single-family homes.
Okay, thank you.
Couple of questions. Can you walk through real quick on the EV for homes? I think it's Section 16.44.115, what that's going to do for new home construction?
As I flip to it, one part is we're kind of just now calling out code that was always enforced through the building side, but now it's being expressed more in the development code. So that's one thing that might be kind of weird here. That might be a little confusing, but let me go...
I guess my question is, if I were to build a new home, would I just have to, is it going to require me just to put in an additional 40-amp breaker? Or is there something else that it's going to require me to do?
You'd have to put in the Level 2.
Which would be a 40-amp, okay. So basically, any new home construction, they're just going to have to upgrade their panel on additional 40 amps? Is that pretty much? In other words, they don't have to run wiring anywhere or anything like that? They just have to have the 40-amp breaker in the box?
Yeah, because state law already requires them to do solar. And this is the next step to that. So they already have to over-plumb the facility anyway. But I think this will integrate into that program.
I was just, I just want to make sure it doesn't require wiring, because I've been an EV owner since way before there was, people knew what EV stood for. And depending on the car, you're going to have to run your wiring in different locations. Some are at the front, some are at the rear. In my house, mine's in the front, but it used to be in the rear. And so I had to run another line to that. So I just want to make sure it doesn't require running wiring, it's just requiring the amp.
I think part of the theory is to, this is new construction. So when it's happening, people wouldn't have to address that problem if they later wanted to have a EV charging.
Yeah, okay. And then on the manufactured home issue, I just want to run a quick hypothetical. A few years ago, everybody knows there's that gas explosion in the neighborhood and lost a couple of homes because of that. Let's say the insurance pays out, and I have so much equity in the home that rather than rebuild a home, I could literally put a manufactured home where my stucco home used to sit?
Yeah, so right now, the, the real update to this is that in all single-family zones besides SF2, you were, are allowed to place a manufactured home. What this is saying is now SF2 is allowed to as well. So, you know, in the RR ER1, ER2, ER3, SF1, right now, you're permitted to place a manufactured home. But what this is saying is now you can do it in the SF2 as well. So it's, it's adding it to one zone. And as Jared says, said, like, yeah, this is state law and something HCD wants to see us implement. And these implementation action that we see before you, it's supposed to be like finished by the end of this year. So HCD is watching us, and they're always like...
So my hypothetical actually can happen?
Technically, yeah, that's...
Yeah, that's, okay.
Technically, yeah.
And we can't ride a way out of that through, through our code? I mean, I...
Yeah, I'm not aware of...
I think that'd be odd. But if I had an $800,000 home, I only owe $200,000, I get cashed out, I make, I have a $600,000 amount now in my bank account, I can say, you know what, I'm just going to take 100 grand, throw a manufactured home on that same lot, pocket the five, and I got all these residential homes, and in the middle, I have a manufactured home. That could theoretically happen.
You're giving us something to think about, Joe.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, all right. So maybe report back to us on that hypothetical because I'm actually curious if that can actually happen.
Is there a risk if we leave it as is?
Anything's a risk with HCD. I'll just be very blunt. Um, but I appreciate this feedback and input. Staff does need this. Um, we got HCD up here. They're carefully watching every city to make sure that we comply with their regulations.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to add that, yeah, it, it, it's all tied to the housing element where there is a policy action item, the one dash nine that's laid out in your staff report. So the, these are all elements or items that we, we had identified in the housing element to be updated. Um, you know, at the request, and there is some, you know, uh, discussion of what, what that was. But, um, tho- those are all items that were kind of identified by HCD to, uh, make changes. Um, all in support to hopefully, uh, you know, certify that housing element.
Right. If I could just have maybe staff just kind of investigate that, I'm just part of its curiosity. But secondly, it's just practicality too. I hate to run into a situation where someone actually can do that and the impact it's going to have on the neighborhood.
That's what's written, um, that's what's written in the code as draft, um, for HCD's direction. Um, but at the same time, uh, we can look at options internally, but I, I think this is a baked bread.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, ju- just adding, I mean, they, they've continually, you know, uh, we have the objective design standard. So, you know, with the single family, the question becomes, do we have objective design standards that kind of tie in to prevent that?
Yeah, we may want to look at that.
A- and then, you know, you, you were asking about the, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just saying like continu- continuity of look or something. I don't know. Um, it's, i- i- it's kind of a far-fetched hypothetical, but it could happen.
Get a flipper that comes in and purchases a property that's rundown, levels it, puts a home.
Levels it and throws in a mobile, um, manufactured home. Well, I, I don't know. That's why I'm saying if there's, if staff can look at that.
We can look at it, but I would s- I would caution that it, we may not be able to change our direction. I think we have previous city council action on this one. We have staff that have been threading with HCD. We have a housing limit. We still need to get certified. So, um, but we'll walk on eggshells while we look, while, while we carefully look at anything that, um, could be an option for the city.
Okay.
Then I wanted to follow back on your question about the, um, the single family with the, uh, EV. Yeah, I mean, look at the definition here for the level two EV supply equipment. Says a, a two hundred and eight, uh, dash two forty volt, uh, forty amp branch circuit and the electric vehicle charging connectors, attachment plugs and all the other fittings, devices, power outlets or other apparatus installed specifically for the purpose of transferring energy between the premise and the electric vehicle. So, I mean, it, it, it seems like you're, you're getting a, a, a pretty ready-made system set up.
I'm not sure we want to go into that much detail because every car is different, every connection's different. There's a big, there's a.
Yeah, I, I, I think the goal though is that, um, how do we promote more folks to buying EVs? I think there's of course a deterrent on the cost of the EV, but also is the setup. Like when you purchase a home and you have solar, but you don't have a hookup, that's another cost factor. And I think what the state might be opining on is that if it's ready, turnkey, you got the solar, you got the EV, uh, charging station. That's a consumer that might be more apt to convert to hybrid or full EV use. I think that's the backdrop of that regulation.
Right, but I think, um, sorry, guys, this is the most exciting stuff out there, but, um. Yeah.
Well, well, when, uh, when Toyota comes out with a hydrogen vehicle at the end of this year and it comes to the United States in a few years, this all might be moot.
I'm just keeping you away from your families tonight. Um, no, so the forty amp makes sense. The problem is, I owned a Tesla before, bought a Rivian, completely different charger. So you can't put in a standardized charger in these homes or you can't require it because until they get some kind of universal agreement amongst all these different EV people, everybody's going to have different connectors. So that's why I think the forty amps appropriate, but no wiring. Don't mandate running, um, that the builder has to run wiring because it's going to change dramatically from car to car. That's my two cents.
Yeah, I, I agree, but the technology and politicians and cities, I, I think we're trying to follow the leader, but I, I concur. We'll look into that, but I think the way the state law is written, I don't know how much wiggle room we have.
Yeah, this definition may be born from the, uh, green building code. So it, it's prob- it's, I think, and Taylor, I don't know if you know for sure, but I believe these definitions were pulled from the green building code.
Well, whoever wrote that code, that is an idiot, but we can bring him down. I can tell him face to face. Um, and then, uh, garages, I kind of heard from some of the fellow commissioners. I, I think I kind of like that, the idea of garages, if it costs more money for a developer, who cares? They're a developer. They have it. Um, plus I know living in apartments, I think it's important to have a garage to store your stuff. Probably less crime, I'd imagine. So I, I don't like the idea of having open carports. Um, and then five acre, one acre, I really, I don't want to make a decision on that to- tonight if we don't have to because I'd rather have staff look into if one's more advantageous for the other. I just want to do it just because the city down the road is doing it. I'd like to know how it impacts us specifically. That's all my comments.
Thank you. I have just a couple of question. What is emergency shelter parking? I, I'm in the dark on that.
So we have, if someone were to be proposing an emergency shelter, we have a definition for that, but it could be, for example, like if there's, uh, like overnight shelter or something, there's a, it's part of our review. We would look at the site and ensure that there's enough parking for the proposed use to make sure that like the neighboring property owners or whoever aren't impacted by having all this, you know, by having too much parking brought.
Yeah, Chair, so one of the use types in our development code is for shelters. I don't know that we have any, but because it is a use type, we have to make sure that we're making appropriate changes to those. So that's, so conjoining those two words, it just means like Taylor said, that it's addressing parking for that type of use, which I don't know that we have today.
Yeah, you just answered my question because I've never heard of one or seen one, and I was just wondering why it's in here. Uh, the other thing I wanted to understand was you made a brief presentation to the development advisory group on this item in April of twenty twenty-three. What was the outcome of that presentation? Uh, did you get any feedback from it? As part of your public process that's in this?
Yeah, Chairman, I think that might have been the multifamily design guidelines, uh, forgive me. Uh, I believe that's what we had recently taken to them.
Okay. I guess that I'm like, I guess like I'm a little like Commissioner LaPegulia. This just hits me that I'm confused on almost everything that's been said. And I'm trying to get my head around it also. And, uh, some of it makes sense, some of it doesn't. And I'm just trying to understand it a little bit better and, uh, that's all I can say. I, I, I'm confused.
No, Chairman Fisher, this is a lot of information and we appreciate you guys taking a look into this. So what we're talking about is we have two commitments. One is our climate action plan. Think of the environmental. Basically, how do we reduce emissions in our community? How do we make the air easier to breathe, right? But then we also have the housing element. That's something that you're aware of, been working on for a number of years. Those two things are conjoined at the end of the day and we have to make progress. So under green building code, California Energy Commission, uh, actions and the state, we have to implement our climate action plan measures. At the same time, very same time, we're working the state to make sure we change our housing element to be more fluid with increasing housing production, uh, for different things. So we're conjoining those two elements in one, a- and hopefully that can kind of, um, clarify why we're dumping a lot of this information at once at you.
Under the electrical vehicle charging stations, I would assume because we're talking about housing development, this is strictly for housing development, not for business development or other types of developments that would have charging stations. Is that a correct assumption or am I wrong?
It, it's addressing, um, other types of development in there, a non-residential, uh, level two, uh, EV spaces for four space, four percent of the total parking. Um, and then we have five percent for two hundred and one or greater parking spaces. So, uh, that's some criteria for non-residential and that's that table sixteen forty-four dash one fifteen one in your, in your attachments.
That, this is showing on your screen right now.
Yeah.
That he's mentioning.
And Chairman, what we're seeing is a lot of activity on shopping centers, that they're going for the larger, it's another revenue stream for some of them. So some businesses are, are able to look at them positive manner. Actually, Village Walk, we've been working with them. They're going to get some Tesla charging stations up there. And if you think of a level two versus a level three, level two, you park there, it could take eight or nine hours to fully charge your car. A level three, between twenty and sixty minutes. So if you're a shopper, you're not going to spend nine hours waiting for your car to charge. So the state found out, oh, these level twos, ooh, it's not very popular. You'll never see someone charging a level two at Costco. But if we can provide level three and I go there and I can charge in twenty-five minutes, let's say, that might be more equitable. So I think there's a smarter understanding on, we got to get more juice in these cars quicker to match the, um, you know, the, the, the needs of the public. And I think that's why we're seeing the level two, level three. Level two is great at home because you can take advantage of peak night energy from midnight to six AM. It's like thirty-nine cents an hour or something. You go plug into these things, they're like three bucks an hour. So, you know, there's a, but I would say that, um, we have to be business friendly at the same time and allow, uh, for these folks to take advantage, which I think we're trying to make a, a curvature. Again, reducing emissions in our communities is very important and, and this is part of that objective.
A- and I would add, it's also mandated in the, uh, California Green Building Code as well. So that's, uh, where some of this background is coming from.
Mandated, what a word. Thirteen years ago, I was involved in the, uh, EV charging stations of in commercial real estate for some of the properties that I oversaw it. And it was coming from the international side into the domestic side. So, uh, that was a long time ago, but it's still, uh, out there. But I want to make sure that they're in the housing element, that the EV charging also provides opportunity for businesses and other types of, of businesses that would be doing EV charging. Did I get an answer from the question about, uh, what came out of your meeting?
Oh, I, I, um, forgive me. I believe the item that we did a touchdown with the DAG was in regards to our multifamily design guidelines.
Okay.
Uh, not so much this one, but, um, did we do a touchdown? Okay, um, I think we'll be doing a touchdown with DAG, no problem at all. Uh, but we do seek their input on a lot of these things that we also seek your recommendation on.
All right. That's all I have at this point in time. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it. Uh, even though in my mind it's a little confusing and, uh, I'm a little lost on some things, but, uh, hopefully I'll get there. Um, what I'd like to do now is, uh, do we have any applicant to give a presentation? Um, I don't see any at this point in time.
Other than HCD and Green Building Code, there was nobody else, but yeah, staff is available for any questions.
Okay. Do we have any questions for staff then at this point in lieu of no applicant?
So your counsel that based on what you're seeing here, that it's kind of like what we've been seeing with affordable housing, that it's pretty much our hands are tied? Is that what you guys are going to see? Yeah, is it, is this something that, that we can continue? What's your counsel? Is it something that we have wiggle room in? Or is this in order to get done what you need to get done? Is this what we have to do?
Two things. We have an adopted climate action plan. We have twenty measures that we need to implement. And we have continuing requirements from the state of California. So on that side, if your city is going to lower emissions and be in compliance with state law, uh, on the trajectory that we're going, we have to adopt these recommendations. Conversely, with the housing element that we need to get adopted as soon as possible, we're well beyond our leash. Uh, these are also the commitments that we've made to HCD to come back to. So I, I would kindly request the commission's deference and recommendation on these items. I know we have to bring back section sixteen, um, but, um, given the pressures from the state, given your concerns though, I, I, I do appreciate them, but I, I think to answer your question, Craig, it, it's, it's like a literal gun to the head, uh, in my opinion. But I, I think at the same time, we're trying to play a smart game here and have good designs, have good locations for these facilities. But, um, from what I've read, we've made commitments and we have to follow through with them.
I have a, maybe a legal question here and maybe procedural with this. In, in the, in the resolution here, obviously, as you go down, we have, um, item A and we have, uh, item B, one through Roman numeral six right here. Seems like that we have, you know, at least I have some concerns. I've, I've heard from my colleagues here, some concerns on some of them, uh, specifically Roman numeral, you know, I and then, uh, well, one, four and five. Does this resolution have to be it's all or nothing type of thing? Or can there be parts that we've either want to hear back from staff and, and extrapolate some of the ones that we have concerns about? And then have a basi- basically the possibility of a partial adoption of the resolution, but some elements that we don't vote on.
So procedurally, um, sorry, Jarrett, please don't get too mad at me. Um, procedurally speaking, it is at the planning commission's discretion. Um, so you can adopt the resolution as stated, um, you can a- adopt it as stated. Um, I know that we're striking out section, um, five, I believe. Um, and you can direct staff to strike out other sections and, um, further look at those and bring those back. Um, you can adopt the resolution in full direction of staff to look at those items and then, um, bring back another resolution for consideration on another date. You can continue the item. Um, it's really up to the planning commission's discretion.
All right, okay. Uh, next, let's move on to public testimony. Uh, at this time, is Madam Secretary, do we have any public comments?
Uh, thank you, Chair. We do not have public comments.
All right, thank you. I'm going to close the public testimony. I opened it at nine twenty-seven and I'm going to close it at nine twenty-seven PM. And we have discussion brought up here to the, uh, commissioners. Any more questions or debate matter on this? Anybody?
Just personally, I would support the resolution if, um, uh, B one and B four were also removed along with B five. With, with the direction on B one, that I think to hear back from staff, I think there was a suggestion they could research the, whether they're smaller or larger lot sizes, if there's maybe, maybe two acre, three acre. Uh, but like I said, a, a bigger swag from five to one, you know, I'd, I'd like more information, just me personally.
It's now time to call for a motion. Who will make the motion? And we also need a second.
I'll make a motion to support the resolution, uh, with, uh, the removal of B one, B four and B five.
Second.
And just to clarify, will that be, um, direction to staff to bring back those items?
I would, I would bring back, um, B one. I'm not asking anything on B four. I don't support. I think having garages is, is, is needed. Yeah, omit four. And then five, I believe there was further research needed.
So do you have that, Jarrett?
So follow up on B one by staff, follow up on B five by staff and B four. So follow up on B1 by staff, follow up on B5 by staff and B4 just eliminate altogether.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, could I interject really quick over here?
Sure.
So I mean, I think it was really staff's preference that we get a recommendation from the commission one way or the other on these items. If you, I mean, clearly you have items that you're unsure about. And so rather than, you know, try to split the baby up, I would request that you consider having us come back to provide the clarification that you're seeking. And if at the end of the day, after we provided the information that you'd like to see, if you don't support, you know, the items, we would relay that, obviously your recommendation, go to city council with a recommendation that a particular section, you know, not be included in the zoning ordinance. I think that way, just from a workflow process, it helps us keep everything together. We don't have to keep coming back and forth to address individual items. I'd really like to encourage the commission to consider allowing us to move everything forward together, which means we owe you some additional information.
Personally for me, I don't know that any further explanation on four would change my mind. And I'd hate to vote no on the entire thing based upon that one small provision. See what I'm saying? So I hate to hold up and gum up all the other changes that are needed for the sake of something that personally for me, if it's stuck in there, I would vote no.
I respect staff's position, but I, I say we leave the motion as is or if it's staff's preference, we table everything.
I agree with that. So what would staff recommend or like us to do?
Staff seeks the recommendation of this planning commission. The planning commission has taken an oath to do that. This is not staff's recommendation to you. But I would say, following our directors' comments, we want to come back and be responsive to any questions that you have. So there must be a way that we can have direction from you to come back to you, give you, give you some responses. It probably won't alleviate all of your concerns and that's fair. But I think for us on this trajectory, come back to you and then go to city council with your recommendation thereof. I think that's what I heard, a more cogent pathway, if that would be okay.
Yeah, so if staff wants to keep it all or nothing, then we should just continue it all to the next.
That would be my recommendation at this time. We can continue the item with direction to staff to look into Commissioner Rubin's suggestion along with any other direction from any of the planning commissioners. And all, we wouldn't need a formal vote at this point, only consensus to continue the item.
What, if I heard correctly, then when it comes back, we can pass this forward to city council with any of these particular under B inclusions or exclusions, correct?
Correct. You could identify which parts you object to and which parts you support. But, you know, I will say, you know, the state as staff has spoken about, the state is looking to remove barriers to housing. And the pieces that we presented, you know, most of those are oriented toward eliminating those barriers and for the city to receive what we call a certified housing element. So there's a certain amount of risk to the city if we don't have a certified housing element that there are, I'll just say, very harsh penalties that are available to developers, non-residents, housing advocates that are actively, you know, looking for cities to pursue a legal action against if they don't have a certified housing element. So I know that's the city council's concern. They want to protect the community from that instance. And so to the extent that we can control how we implement our housing plan, I think the recommendations that we've provided for you do that. But understanding, you know, we want to be sensitive to be able to answer all the questions that you have and get you the answers that you need.
I appreciate that.
Can we make a new motion?
Let me follow up with just one question. So then, let's say hypothetically, we pass something on to city council. And let's say one of these items that we were, you know, we recommend not to go with that. Would city council be able to say that particular one, the planning commissioner said no to, they could go ahead and green light?
They could. I mean, they would, you know, just like the commission does. I mean, they consider the policy issues that you're wrestling with as well. And so we would go through the same kind of analysis. We would give them advice about what we think the state, you know, would frown upon us doing and what we think we could implement and still be in compliance with the housing element. So they, but they ultimately do have the authority to, you know, to decide what language gets adopted. But with your recommendation, obviously.
Thank you.
I'll withdraw my previous motion to allow a new motion.
Right. Let's state a new motion or are we in consensus for a continuance?
Continue.
So the consensus is to not vote on this tonight, but to continue the issue, continue it with the issues that the commissioners have noted. One, four and five. Is that legal?
My only question would be to, if staff wants a date certain of the continuance.
If what?
If staff wants a date certain of the continuance for when this item would come back.
Well, we're dependent on hearing back from staff, so it's just up to them when they can bring it back.
Correct. I'm asking more along their timeline for when they're wanting things adopted.
You know, with all due respect, this is the first time we saw this and we have some legitimate questions. So I don't feel that it's an all or nothing this evening. It should be, we should vet it, you know, and talk about it and kick something over to city council that we've had something to vet and with staff and ourselves about. So I appreciate staff's issues, but it is what it is. And until these questions are answered, I'm not comfortable going forward.
Yeah, we absolutely want to do the best we can to respond to the questions, the concerns that you have.
And I think to that point as well, right? I mean, anything that we touch, we want to run it upstairs so it goes, goes, goes through. And I know council has kicked a couple of things back, you know, our way. So it's, you know, respectfully, certainly, you know, respect everything staff's doing. It's just, we just want to make sure we got it buttoned up.
I apologize. For clarity's sake, I meant a date certain to bring back the item for the planning commission's consideration, not a date certain for when it would need to be approved. I just want to make that clear.
And July 12th would be a good date, a city attorney for us.
Okay.
Is it, okay. So are we in a continuance or are we going to make a new motion that the staff is going to look into the sections that have been referred to by the, by the planning commissioners?
I believe it's a continuance with staff looking into these. So when we come back to this in July, they've got answers.
Okay. So this pro, this item will be a continuance to be brought back to the planning commission on July 12th.
Thank you, Chair.
With that, are there any city planner comments?
The only thing is just upcoming hearings, tentatively, the next, for the next hearing, we're looking at the hillside, hillside overlay updates. So that may be coming to you. Otherwise, no other.
City attorney comments?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Planning commission comments? Anybody? All right. I only have one comment and that is, I think you've been advised of a planning seminar that can be done online coming up in this month.
Oh, if not, I'll follow up with Tanya. So Michael Fisher is referring to a seminars coming up. Actually, I think you can log on to that. So forgive me, Michael. I'll double check that.
Is this one here?
Yeah, I thought the topics were pretty good and it's remote, so that's, and free.
It's Friday, June 23rd from 9:30 AM to 4:00 PM for training. And it looked like it was going to be very good topics and could be of use to all of our planning commissioners.
Yeah, any trainings like that, we highly encourage. So thank you, Michael.
But I didn't want to contact them in lieu of.
Spoken wheel. Yeah, very good. No, yeah, and forgive me, we'll follow up on that, Michael.
I appreciate that. Adjourned tonight's meeting. Thank you. Thank you for your time, everyone.